Everybody, please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, that is just for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Roll call, please.
Mayor Samaras?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mr. Howie?
Here.
Ms. Delay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Mr. Nutter?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. All right, before we begin our agenda, we have special order of business, and this is Spotlight of Excellence. And I think I saw this group last night. And you are a credit to Lowell High School. But this is the Lowell High School, for everybody that's watching on our TV program, Lowell High School Junior ROTC National Championship Group. Will Colonel, the Colonel come up and please give an explanation?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Samaras. Thank you for having us. Good evening Superintendent Kalfawi and school committee members. Thank you all for taking the time out of your busy schedules today to recognize Lowell High School Drill Team on their recent accomplishments at the Air Force Drill Nationals in Dayton, Ohio. We'll start with the Lady Raiders. The Lady Raiders, Lowell High School's unarmed drill team, finished in third in the Air Force Junior ROTC competition. The competition was extremely tough, with 28 schools from across the country competing. The Lady Raiders finished first in regulation drill, third place in unit inspection, second place in dual cadet performances by Cadet Jackson and Cadet Bahati, third place in duels, Cadet Peeden and Cadet Pitch, fourth place unarmed individual drill regulation by Cadet Chantel Perez. It was an incredible performance by the Lady Raiders. Our Lowell High School Armed Drill Team, the Red Raider Guard, brought back the Air Force Junior ROTC Armed Drill Championship to Lowell. The Red Raider Guard finished first place overall against these 28 schools, beating the heavily favored team from San Antonio, Texas. The armed team finished first place in unit inspection, third place in regulation drill, third place in color guard, second place armed exhibition drill, third place solo routine by Cadet Hong, third place dual routine by Cadet Hong and Cadet Poirier, third place armed individual drill regulation Cadet Ian Kuna, and Armed Captain Tyler Poirier also received the second place Commander's Award. As I mentioned last night at the city council meeting, Lowell has always been known as the Mill City, while now it can also be known as the Drill City. We are so proud of the dedication, determination, and sacrifices that cadets and coaches have made. National champions are not born. These cadets and coaches train 12 months a year. I'd like to take a quick moment to thank those folks that made this journey possible. First, thank you to the cadets for believing in each other. Drill is more than just marching. It takes commitment, discipline, teamwork, and positive attitude to become Air Force Champions. I would like to thank Coach Morales and Coach Abar for dedicating their lives to molding our cadets into such confident leaders. I'd also like to thank the LHS Junior ROTC Alumni Association and financial donors and parents for believing in our students and giving them the opportunity to succeed. And as I said last night, I'd be amiss without mentioning Master Sergeant Kevin Casilli and Tech Sergeant Dave Smith, who have been here for 12, 15, 16, 17 years, and ongoing, that have led this team and the cadets to such glorious accomplishments. If it's okay, Mayor Samaras and Superintendent Kalfawi, I'd like to bring up the team captain from the armed drill team to tell you a little bit about their journey.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Superintendent and school committee members. First off, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of the Lowell High School Drill Team for all the support and recognition we have received from this community. This championship is the outcome of countless hours of practice and dedication from an amazing group of students, coaches, and instructors. What many people don't know is how involved this sport really is. From the first weeks of school, we are off 6:30 till the start of school every morning, up in the gym, perfecting every little detail. Then, when it comes close to Nationals, we practice even more on the weekends. Next year's team has even set up a schedule for summer practices. So it means a lot to all of us to see all this hard work pay off. But drill is more than just a competition or the medals and trophies. It's about a bond made between not only friends but family. Over the last four years, I've been honored to work with these amazing cadets. I've had the chance to watch this team grow into what they are now, and it's been an incredible journey. They inspire me and each other enough to put in the work it takes to become the championship team they are now. And of course, all of us owe thanks to the AFJ ROTC program here at the high school for instilling traits of leadership, perseverance, and not only belonging but family. Again, we thank you for all the continued support and encouragement for the unit and the team, and we are proud to bring the trophies back to Lowell where they belong. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have one more speaker? That's... Oh, that's it. Thank you. You know, I just have to say one thing. You know, the school committee, the city council, we're very proud of you. A lot of people joke with me how many times I might say in a conversation that I was a former headmaster of Lowell High School. But when I see people like you and were able to show young students like yourselves how successful you are, you could, people can understand why I'm so proud that at one time I was headmaster of Lowell High School. I mean, you represent our city so well. It's, it's, it really is, you are our future, and we thank you for that. Do we want a school picture or any pictures? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know how I'm always boasting about you? I am the proudest former teacher at Lowell High School of the accomplishments that you do on a regular basis, that I wish it was in the newspaper more often to say how great our students are, and specifically you. You have brought such honor to your ensemble and to yourselves and to the school and to the city. You should be extremely proud of that. Take that to the bank. That is something that will never be taken away from you. Be proud of it, because we are proud of you. Thank you.
Anyone else? What else? Yes, Mr. Howie?
Thank you. I'd like to just say my granddaughter's involved with the ROTC, so if I didn't say anything, I'd go home a little bit sad. So what I want to say is this. I know these children think winning is everything. It's not. Just because they came in first, that's not why I'm happy for them. I'm happy for them because I know if they stick it out, the ROTC definitely can get you into some decent colleges. Your scholarship money Lowell High gives out $500,000 every year, and I think when you do win, those are the things that open people's eyes. So I know the bus trip was terrible. The city is looking for money, Mayor, but I told some of these children, when they told me the bus trip was a rough ride home, I said, "Did they meet you there?" They said, "Yep, we got an escort, we got all of this." I says, "Well, next year when you go, if I'm still on this, well, I will be on the school committee," I said, "Maybe we can get some money to fly yous out there." I don't know. But I'm just really proud of all of them, and thank you so much for letting me speak on it.
He's a first-class man, so... Thank you. What I'd like, as members of the school committee, if we just stand in front with the ROTC cadets, and we'll have a picture?
Are you doing the piano? The one where you can do the whole thing?
I don't know how to do that. But I can get them, actually. I got them last night.
All right, I think I can, too.
Okay.
Is everybody in it?
Ready? One, two, three, champions. One, two, three.
Champions!
There we go. Beautiful.
Normally, we'd ask you to come behind the rail, but I learned logistics from Sergeant Casilli and Smith, so that's why we kept you behind there. But congratulations. Thank you. I believe next we have the Stocklosa Knowledge Bowl competitors. Are they here?
Good evening. My name's Carolyn Rochelo. I'm the coordinator of Special Programs for the District, and I am delighted to introduce the team from the Stocklosa Middle School, who have won our 30th Annual Knowledge Bowl, if you can believe it. Knowledge Bowl was started back in 1988, the year I graduated from college, believe it or not. So it's been around for a long time. We are incredibly excited to introduce you to a great group of students who have worked incredibly hard since November and have beaten out eight other middle schools to win the title of champion. I want to thank the school committee members for their financial support, but also, even more so, every school committee member, as well as Dr. Kalfawi, Deputy Superintendent Durkin, and Assistant Superintendent Robin Desmond, all served as judges, and we really appreciate all of you taking time out of your schedule. Many of the school committee members have come more than once, have come to several of our events, and they're always so supportive of our students. So I want to thank you all for that and for taking the time to support. It's a wonderful event. Our students from the Stocklosa will represent Lowell at the Regional Knowledge Bowl that's coming up in June, and will be competing against other towns like Chumsford, Tuxbury, Drakeett. There's, I believe, seven towns now that are involved, and so I'll be sending you more information about that. But without any further ado, I would like to introduce Principal of the Stocklosa School, Mr. James Cardesi, who will come and introduce you to the coaches and to our students.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and school committee members. It's an honor to be here tonight to acknowledge the work of these students, what they've done. They've put in countless hours over several months to take home this. Carolyn Rochelo, I have to thank her. She puts a lot of hours and a lot of communication through email and phone calls to make sure those, those events go off without a hitch. I do appreciate the school committee members that came out to support us and judge. Also, Superintendent Kalfawi, Superintendent Jean Durkin, and Superintendent Robert Desmond. I can't really take much credit for this. I'm gonna have to give it over to our coaches, Ms. Gina Brunellis and Ms. Megan Dunbar. They did the vast majority of this work, and also the students. And I also thank the parents who came out in support. We had, we had a large contingency of parents each and every event, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cardesi. And we wanted to thank the students for all their hard work, first and foremost, because they're the real stars here. We wanted to thank all of the school committee members who were judges. We know that you guys give your time, and without it, it would have been a very tough competition. We wanted to thank all the parents and all the staff members from our school who came out to support us and who continue to support us. We appreciate that. And to all the other schools for their fierce competition and, and for their sportsmanship. They have been incredible in all of their congratulations.
Yep.
All right. So I'm going to introduce the team members. There's Madeline Gilpin, Glenn Jeru, Channery Mao, Chokrath Un, Kim Lang Kit, Brittany Horn, Sully Hang Su, Keaton Tuk, Buchanan Chim, and last but not least, Perum Nuth. And one of our, our team members wanted to say a couple words just to thank the school committee. Glenn's gonna come up and share a couple words with you.
Hello. My name is Glenn Jer. Thank you for the opportunity to take part in this school committee hearing, and thank you for the funding to the Knowledge Bowl, because that gave me the opportunity to participate. And my favorite part of it was that it was a competition. In my, I've been in Knowledge Bowl all four years, and in my first year, we, we got out in the first elimination round, which made it real and made it evident that this was a competition that you had to work hard for. And not only I worked hard, but the teachers surrounding me worked hard. They stayed after school many, many hours just to facilitate our learning and our, and sharpen our skills in the art of buzzing. My friend Angelos was with me also since day one. He kind of almost convinced me to try out. And when I, when we did, we both went in, and we've been together since, from fifth grade to seventh grade, but he moved away to Tingsborough. And over there, they only have one middle school, so he said, you know, "If you win the Knowledge Bowl, you can come against me." It's almost automatic. Yeah. So I made it my challenge, not only to win here, but to defeat my friend, which I did many times in practice. Thank you so much. I thank you for your time.
And I just wanted to give, the dates are gonna be June 19th and 20th at Chumsford High School, and I will be sending you all information so that you can come and support our students from the Stocklosa. I also wanted to mention that our Daily School team came in second place, followed by the Wang School in third place. And we're very proud of all the teams that participated, but we're here to celebrate for our Stocklosa. So thank you very much for your time tonight.
I would just like to say on behalf of the school committee, and as former headmaster of the high school, because I have to mention it again. But I was often asked, "Do you check from the middle schools, you know, the football player, the girls volleyball player? Do you check on who's gonna be coming into your school for the sports?" And I have to say, "Yes, I would do that." But I also checked your names, because the Knowledge Bowl winners I knew would be leaders in the high school. I knew that they would be in part of the, an effort to be part of Knowledge Bowl teams from Lowell High School, because I can say, once in Lowell High School, we went against a lot of great schools. I mean, the top schools literally in the country, and we held our own always because of programs like this and children like you. So thank you very much. Mr. Howie?
Thanks, Mayor. Again, I know this is gonna be a long night, because there's a lot of things I want to talk about, but this Stocklosa Bowl is really close to my heart, because I was on the school committee 20 years ago with Kate Stocklosa. And if she was alive today, she'd be the proudest woman on the planet, even though they've won one before. I found that out tonight. I thought it was the first time they won. But I want people to know that I sat in the crowd with the Stocklosa School because of Mrs. Stocklosa, and I was trying to bring them some Irish luck. But what I really loved about this, and you guys, I know all of yous were there, is the way the three principals, the Wang School, the Daily School, and the Stocklosa. The Daily School was all in certain ties. I mean, they're always a class act. They went out to Tingsborough last year and they lost, but they're still of a class act. After it, Mayor, the first thing the Daily School principal did was went over and seen Mr. Cardesi to say, "Nice job." He looked at me, he said, "You did a nice job, too," even though I was cheering for the Stocklosa. But that kid, there's a child out there in Tingsborough that left this team. His name's Angelo. He was just telling you about him. And I'm not saying anything against any one of these children, but Angelo, and everybody knows, was something else. I can't wait to see this regional bowl, this team going out and get the trophy and bring it back. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? All right, one more. Yes?
Sorry. I just wanted to say that you Knowledge Bowl winners are gonna be like amazing once you go into high school, and you guys are gonna be the ones seizing those leadership opportunities, seizing the opportunities that the high school is gonna give you, and you're gonna be ruling the world. Just saying. Nice job, guys.
Thank you. All right. One quick picture. Same mic. I believe we have one more program. Spotlight on Excellence in the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Dr. Kalfawi, and the school committee. Tonight, I am honored to introduce one of our Lowell High School students who's a senior, Samiel Blanco. Do you want to come up, Samiel? Samiel is a gifted artist who is currently enrolled in digital photo, intro graphic design, and senior art portfolio. He's also a member of the Yearbook Club and Tenacity Challenge. His graphic arts teacher, Mrs. O'Leary, is here somewhere supporting him. He also has his mom and his two, couple cousins and his sister here tonight for this presentation. I have actually had the pleasure of viewing two of his pieces, two pieces of his work, one for the poster contest and one he did for the Tenacity Challenge a few weeks back at Bedford High School. He's an excellent student and a hidden gem at Lowell High School. Next year, he plans to attend the Mass College of Art. Congratulations to him, and I can't wait to see his progress through the year, through the years. He is a true artist who speaks volumes through his artwork. The reason Samiel is here tonight is because he recently won honorable mention in the Middle Sex Partnership for Youth poster contest. Poster's up, up there. You can see it. I'd like to introduce Margie Daniels, the Executive Director of the Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth, and Tony Pira, I'm not gonna get this right. Okay, that's it, who's President of the, President of the Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth Board of Directors. They will be presenting the award to Samiel.
Good evening. I want to thank the school committee for inviting us here this evening. The Lowls, the Lowell Public Schools have been very near and dear to our heart, because in the 11 years now that I've been the Executive Director of Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth, we've had such phenomenal participation from students and faculty from the Lowell Public Schools. I really want to thank you for all that you've done to form a really good partnership. Our mission is to keep kids safe and healthy in this world today. We have so many challenges. We do a poster project every year, and this year, the theme was "Be the Change." You can see the beautiful poster up here that received honorable mention, and it was selected from 191 posters that were submitted from school districts in eastern Massachusetts. So that's really something to be proud of. I'd like to introduce Tony Parentazi, who would like to say a few words also. He's the President of Middle Sex Partnerships for Youth Board of Directors.
Thank you, Margie. Well, it's a great pleasure to be here to help present Samiel with the Honorable Mention Award. And I want to continue the theme of the evening that basically says urban education is alive and well in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We hear so many negative things, and it's unfortunate. And I agree with your wonderful superintendent. It's too bad that the newspaper and the media doesn't spend the time on the positive things like this evening that they spend on the small fractional negative things. But one, one more congratulations for Lowell High School and the community. Art is the great equalizer for many of our students, and we need to keep it in our schools, our music, our art. So once again, congratulations and thank you all for your support.
The young man would like to come behind the rail.
They're not, they're not all gonna get in.
One, two, three.
They're not all gonna get in.
They're not all gonna get in.
Thank you, everybody. It's worth it to take time out to acknowledge the successes that we have. All right, next on the agenda is the public hearing regarding inter-district school choice programs. Also, the vote is two or three pages later. What I'd like to do is have the hearing and take the vote here, put it together. All right, this is a, uh, we have to open up this hearing for anybody who's, uh, in favor. This hearing is open for the public hearing on inter-district school choice program. Is there anybody here to speak in favor of the program? In favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anybody to speak in opposition? 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 That part of the hearing is closed. Is there any discussion from the floor regarding this program? Therefore, I'd like to, uh, there's no, there's no speakers. Yes.
Uh, if we could perhaps ask the superintendent to explain the, we vote on this every year, but if we could get an explanation for the public, would we?
It's a procedure that the state asks us to do. Uh, I think this is the third year in a row. Uh, we, we're still limiting the, the number of seats, uh, available to our neighbors as thirty. Um, I think we did not reach thirty the first year. We did not reach thirty the second year. I believe we're not expecting to go. We still feel that thirty is adequate, and, uh, it doesn't alter as well the offerings in the school. So, yeah, and it's only for the Lowell High School. Only for the Lowell High School.
Mr. Doherty? Okay, that was a question. Yes. Any further questions? All right, I need a motion to approve by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoi. I need a roll call.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
All right, I need a motion to approve the permission to enter, uh, several contracts. Are there any discuss, is there any discussion? Oh, I'm sorry. Did we skip that? We did. All right, I need approve, okay, I need a motion to accept and place and file the minutes, the approval of the minutes of the regularly scheduled Lowell School Committee meeting of Wednesday, March twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Thank you. All right, the next portion is, we have three contracts, I believe, to enter into. Uh, are there any questions to the superintendent regarding these contracts? Okay. Need a motion to approve the permission to enter by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Thank you. All right, next we have a memorial. Oh, I'm sorry, we have a roll call on this matter.
Mayor Samaris?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nada?
Yes.
Seven yeas, approved.
Okay. We have a memorial, Maureen Finn Conlon, retired Shaughnessy School teacher, the sister-in-law of Denise Finn Shaughnessy, school teacher, and mother-in-law of Lori Conlon, Greenell School teacher. Would like to have Doc in the chamber for a moment of silence.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. One, could I add one?
Sure.
To this, um, former mayor, former city councillor, former LRTA Executive Director, Bob McGuire, uh, passed away over the weekend. Uh, Bob was elected mayor of Lowell in nineteen sixty-seven and nineteen seventy-nine, serving on the, uh, school committee as chair. He was elected to the city council in nineteen sixty-five, sixty-seven, seventy-three, seventy-seven, seventy-nine, and eighty-one. Bob also ran for Congress at one point in his, uh, long and distinguished career here in the city. And, um, I just wanted to mention, uh, the many contributions of, of Bob McGuire to the city of Lowell.
He certainly did. Thank you for bringing that up. We'll now have Doc in the chamber for a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, next we have motions. First by Mr. Nada, request the administration to provide current school committees copies of the end of the fiscal year closing process and request a meeting of the finance subcommittee to review or develop a written policy by May fifteenth, two thousand eighteen. I need a second by Mr. Doherty. Mr. Nada?
Thank you. Uh, I'm not sure if, if we have, um, a written policy of how the, the year gets closed. I know at one time, the, um, the school committee, I think this past school committee, um, made a motion to develop a policy, uh, or at least notification. But I know that the year, there's been some, um, talk about the way this, the, the year gets closed, and I just think that we need to, um, you know, kinda keep the school committee informed of if there's gonna be any excess money, or, or if we decide we're going to take, um, insurance in, from grants and put it into the regular account, uh, things like that. So, I think we just need to have a kind of overall progress, step by step, of what goes into closing the year, uh, transfers to, you know, make up budget deficits and all that, and then, and we could do that at a subcommittee meeting.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Nada. Um, I think it's a good idea to do that, but can I respectfully request that this meeting be instead of May fifteen, because we're really busy with the budget, and that falls right within the budget discussions? Can we push it to the first meeting of June? And that would be June sixth, if that's okay?
Sure, that would be fine.
Any other discussion on the matter? All in favor? Motion approved. All right, next by Mr. Nada, superintendent verbally advise school committee if we are on schedule to meet all required budget presentation and meeting dates adopted by the school committee. Also inform if all unions slash staff have been notified on, of potential layoffs slash reduction per contract requirement. Need a second? Ms., uh, Martin, thank you. Mr. Nada?
It's pretty self-explanative. I'm su- I'm sure the superintendent is all set to respond.
Okay, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Nada. Uh, to the first part of the question, yes, we are planning to be on time, especially now that we delayed the other one. And, uh, we, yeah, we should be all, all set for that. And as far as the unions, all unions have been notified as, uh, per the agreement we had with them. Uh, there was initially, the notification was March first. We had requested a, uh, dead, uh, postponement of the deadline to April first. They were all notified by Mr. Hall directly, uh, our Labor Council.
I realize you sent out a, uh, a message to us earlier in the week. One of our dates coincides with the school building committee.
Yes.
So, we need to find a new date, um, for that. Uh, if we could all, uh, if you could suggest a few, I, I think I replied with a suggested date, we could just use a regular meeting if that was okay, but if you'd like to poll the members, I, I just know that we need to address that.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, on a different topic, I know we, uh, Ms. Martin, yourself, Mr. Mayor, and I think, uh, Mr. Freshen, myself, attended a meeting in which the, uh, school building committee had scheduled a, um, a meeting themselves on the same night as we are, we were scheduling April thirtieth. And I've been notified by the city that, uh, we, they needed a chamber and requested that if we could do some changes in hours, it's a lot harder, I guess, for them to change. So, Mr. Nada sends a re, sent a recommendation, which is fine with our team. I think we can, we support that, to delay the, uh, that hearing to the following meeting, a regular meeting on May second. And if it meets your approval, we, we take a vote on that, so that, because we haven't publicized yet on the newspapers, which we have to do by law. I think the deadline is to let them know by April sixteenth, so we have plenty of time to do the change.
Ms. Martin?
Could I ask just for people who are watching, if we could just rattle off what the, what the dates are? We could include that May second as the, as the, um, next date.
I have it. I have it here, I believe. Yeah. Uh, Thursday, April twenty-sixth, at the Starkloska School. Uh, instead of Monday, April thirtieth, we're going to do it on Wednesday, May second, here in the council chamber, as part of our regular scheduled meeting. Thursday, May tenth, here at City Hall. Monday, May fourteenth, at the Sullivan School. And then, uh, final vote here on May sixteenth.
Sorry, trying to open up some windows, it's kinda warm up here. All right, we need a motion to make the change. This by Mr. Nada, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor? Motion passes. Any further discussion, Ms. Manna? Next, we have, by Mr. Nada, request school committee attorney provide legal opinion if per Robert's Rules and the School Committee Policy Manual, the subcommittee chair can call a meeting without first presenting it as a motion on the meeting floor per mayor's proposed preference. Need a second by Mr. Doherty. Snada?
This, um, comes from a conversation we had where I wanted to schedule a, a budget hearing, and, and you informed me that the superintendent, uh, didn't think it was a good time to do that, and
I didn't say that.
Wanted to change it for some reason. So, I, there's nothing in our policy manual that I have found, nor in Robert's Rules of Order, that say a chairman can't call for a meeting. I know the city council, I've talked to several city councillors who say that is in their policy manual, that they have to do it on the floor, and I, I know, all of a sudden, Mr. Dakota brings in a motion for that exact thing tonight. But, um, I have checked with the Mass Association of School Committees. I have looked at, uh, fourteen different online policy manuals, uh, ranging from Haverhill to Winchendon, and none of them in their policy manuals online state that it has to be done that way. Uh, my understanding is it's been done this way on the school committee, from talking to several former school committee people. This has been the norm for a long time, and all of a sudden, with a new mayor, he wants to make a change. I don't know why we need to, but, uh, that's up to a vote of this body.
It's, uh, the idea on, if I could speak from the podium, we are seven members of the Lowell School Committee. We work as a whole. That's our job. Our job is to make sure that we give our children the best education possible. We're seven different individuals, all with different ideas, different approaches, and that's what makes the beauty of all of this, because we can offer a, a variety of reasons why we wanna see something happen. But if you think about it, there's about fourteen subcommittees on the school committee. There's twenty-six subcommittees on the city council. The reason for this, it's pass, it's been past practice to do something like this, if every member of every subcommittee could call his or her meeting when they want to, the superintendent or the city manager would not have time to do their job. This is not my ide, this, uh, what I wanna do is not to infringe upon your rights or to make it harder. But when we speak as, when, what the purpose of, by Robert's Rules are, you have the meeting of the whole. If there is a, a matter that comes up that need, requires more study, individual study, a different, uh, you know, more, it, to address different issues, you assign that subcommittee the work. Then the subcommittee brings in that work to the committee as a whole, to allow the committee to work in a very productive way. So, this is not something that's Bill Samaris's idea. This has been a policy of most of the ma, I've talked to, all the mayors I've talked to, this is what they'd like to do. Have some slipped through? Yes. But the whole idea is not in any way to impede anybody's wish to do something. But it is to make us react to any situation for the good of our children as a whole. When we work together as a unit, we're gonna be far more successful. It's as simple as that. Any further discussion?
Uh, just to, perhaps to offer some of the, the history, um, and I hadn't spoken with, with Jerry about it, but, um, what may be particularly shocking is that generally, what had happened was that the administrators would come to the chair requesting, uh, a subcommittee. That had always been kind of the historical way it had worked, certainly in my case with the curriculum personnel. I was generally approached by the, the staff who had something exciting, something challenging, something, uh, that they wanted to be able to have a public discussion about and share information, uh, prior to a meeting, and the request would come to me then to, to, um, call a, a subcommittee for those, for those, um, specific issues. Um, you know, I think so long as, you know, again, we were all kind of held to our own professional, um, approach, and I really do not think that, certainly in my time on this committee, that there's been, been any abuse of that. Um, and I can just, I'm sorry, I
I haven't said abuse. I mean, but the thing is, that's, it could be, uh, a situation. Go ahead.
Great, thanks. Um, and I think that, um, that, again, we have always been able to marshal ourselves and conduct ourselves appropriately and, and not take advantage of this. Um, you know, I do think that, and certainly you're not the first mayor to impose this. Uh, Mayor Kennedy was the first one, to my knowledge, that had kind of put this new protocol in place. Um, and, you know, it certainly worked, 'cause it certainly cut down on the number of subcommittees. Um, you know, I can say certainly from my individual perspective, you know, we had gone from having monthly updates on curriculum. Um, I had never had that in place for personnel, only for curriculum, 'cause I felt it was that important. Um, I, I don't think we've had two or three in the last three years. Um, so, you know, it certainly has had an impact and has cut down on the amount of information. Um, you know, I think whichever way we choose to go is fine, um, but I do think that it's important to note that, you know, any, any chairperson, um, you know, the questions we're asking are real and substantive. Um, and I, I think that the, the theory, at least behind all this, was that subcommittees were an opportunity to dig into information deeper
That's correct.
So that we would, so that the committee as a whole and that subcommittee would be able to have the, the depth of information to make good decisions.
That's correct.
Great. So, so as long as we do that, that would be great. If we can, we can do it here, that's fine.
But it's the approach. In other words,
Right.
If it comes from the whole, say, "We can't go any further," or, "We have subcommittees," 'cause if we didn't have subcommittees, these meetings would go to two or three in the morning. And I don't think people wanted to see that happen. But the thing is, it's not having control. It's the idea of making sure we have good control of the information and what we need. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I'm gonna have to say, I, I also have, um, you know, ten years of experience on the school committee, and I've never seen that abused. I didn't feel like that was a problem, that, you know, to have a chair. Um, as my colleague, Ms. Martin, mentioned, many times it would be the administration coming to us, say, "We've got these issues we need to look at," and the subcommittee was a good place to do a deeper dive in that. Um, my concern is, well, A, we, I've had a concern about communication overall, you know, in my last two years in the term and, and now, in this current term. I, I'd like to see more and better communication, not less. So, my concern is, when we have to do it on the floor first, you know, that requires one of our two mu, meetings to come before the whole. And as you know, we've canceled a number of meetings because of weather this winter. Uh, we just lost a meeting because of the budget, that we're gonna be now using it as a budget. In the summer, we only meet once a month. And I, I just feel a certain, um, sense of urgency about the work that we're trying to do on this committee and the amount of information, uh, that we're able to get in order to make informed decisions and really fulfill our role, uh, to the best of our ability. So, that would be a reason that I would not wanna go to, you know, and I, I don't think, uh, as Ms. Martin mentioned with curriculum, I, I don't remember the last curriculum subcommittee meeting. I'm on that committee. Um, we have not been having that many subcommittee meetings that there's any reason to change what has been past practice. what has been past practice for decades, or at least over decades since I've been around on the school committee.
I saw it another way, but you raise some salient points. I mean, there's no question about that. It's because the city council does meet every week, so it affords us a quicker time. I mean, what I'd be...
Just my comment, I think that the city council maybe does not dig into the number of issues that we need to dig into to the same level of detail. I mean, I don't know. Maybe it does. I haven't seen it. We do quite a bit of work on this side. But the weekly versus the every other week and with the cancellations, I think we really could delay being able to get the information we need to make the best decisions we can in a district that's very challenged, as you know, with the needs of our students and the resources to meet those needs.
I really don't see this, in other words, if we need more meetings of that subcommittee on curriculum, it can be addressed through bringing it up as a motion in these meetings. But the thing is, you bring up a point about if we miss a meeting and because of weather or what have you. I'd be willing to have the sup, if you wanted to call a meeting, have, call the superintendent's office and poll everybody if they wanted to have, if they're willing to have the meeting. It's just, it's procedural, you could see it as a nuisance, but it isn't. It's a sense of order. We have to have a sense of order because the role that we have here is so important. I want to make, the one thing I want to do in my tenure as mayor is to make sure that we address a lot of the matters that you've talked about. Because, don't forget, I was in the school department for a lot of years. At times, I'm standing up here sometimes and I'm listening to something I listened to 15 years ago, 25 years ago, 30 years ago, and it hasn't been resolved. And, you know, I'd like to see resolution to a lot of important problems. And because of the budget situation that's coming up, because of issues, because of the need of a new high school, there's so many things, there's a lot for us to discuss. So I just want to make sure that we set out the proper time and do it in a proper fashion. It's in no way to stifle anything, but I would be willing, because of the time, to do a polling if somebody came up and said, "Look, I need a meeting." But that's, you know, something. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Hoyy?
Well, when I, I was sitting on the fence on this motion here, I wasn't really sure because two years ago when I got on the school committee again, I remember what it was like 20 years ago. I could just look at the superintendent or a few of my colleagues and say, "I'd like to have a subcommittee on the high school," and would have it. But 20 years ago, it's changed. When I came back these past two years, right now I think the way it's going, and I agree with you, Mayor, I think it's the way to keep it for now. Only because we've had a tough couple of years about the high school and the issues have made, you know, a big impact on politics in the city. But I think if we don't watch out, the superintendent, to me, we overwork him sometime. And I think when I had the right to call a subcommittee meeting every week, I used to do it when I first started because just look at Mr. Nutter, I think he's very motivated, especially about the budget. So I think he has, you know, some legitimate things with his motion, but I just can't support it. I don't want to carry this on, but I think you're right this time, Mayor. I think you're right. I'm going to not support the motion.
Further discussion, Mr. Nutter?
As a compromise, may I suggest that we take this motion along with Mr. Dakota's motion and we send it to a policy subcommittee where we can have a more lengthy discussion and maybe some input from, you know, the Mass Association of School Committees, as I've already looked at that, and from our own lawyer.
You know, I understand that, I mean, but, you know, I could have a vote now, I mean, but, Mr. Dakota, what do you want, what do you prefer to do?
I wouldn't be against that if we wanted to bring it to the policy subcommittee.
Sure.
But till it's brought to the policy subcommittee and work done on that, I would invoke, you know, the standard of if you want to have a meeting...
So you're arbitrarily creating a rule? The rule does not exist in our policy as it stands today.
But the thing is, I go from past practice. I know some have said, you know, "Done it this way," but it also came from a time in the high school or in the school system where it was done the other way.
So we have policies, but we don't always need to follow them? Is that what the message we're sending to our staff also?
No, the message I'm sending to you right now, to everybody here, is that I want some control on the subcommittees. I do not favor subcommittees being able to be called at someone's because someone wants to have a subcommittee meeting. I would like it to come from the whole. When you look at Robert's Rules, we are a committee to act as a whole. It always has been that way, and it is that way. And the subcommittees carry out the work of the whole. As a matter of fact, if a subcommittee were to do some work on some project and the committee as a whole stated that this is not the direction we want to go, the committee as a whole could stop that work. All I'm just saying is, I'll agree to go to, to have a policy decision made on this, but I would like to at this present time just to keep the policy that I've got in place.
I have a copy of Robert's Rules here, I printed out from the internet, that talks about the role of the subcommittee and the chairman of the subcommittee being able to call for a meeting. That's in Robert's Rules.
It's also in Robert's, it's also in Robert's Rules, depending how, it's all dependent upon interpretation as to what the mayor or the chairman can call. So we have, let's move, yeah, Mr. Hoyy?
I need to say one more thing. The reason why I won't support it, number one, if someone says to me, "I went to the Massachusetts Association of School Committee for information," I'm just one vote, but that's not where I call for my information. And number two, our lawyer, using our lawyer, he's not a full-time lawyer, he only really, you know, he's a part-time lawyer, and he's already working at least 40 hours a week for the school system right now.
He's not working for the school system. He works for the school committee. The school committee hired him.
All right, excuse me.
He does, but my point is, and let me just finish.
Let's not talk on this.
I'm almost done.
No, you're fine.
I just think, number one...
You have the floor.
Right, I wouldn't go to the MASC, and I think we're, you know, using our lawyer too much. And if we're going to keep using him, we better pay him more. And the last thing I'll say is, when you say Robert's Rules of Order, to me, that's like the Bible. That's a very tough thing to read. I'm glad he has the time to read it, but I'm still not going to support that motion. Thank you very much.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I do think that it's a fine point within both the MASC and the, and Robert's Rules. You know, what I would recommend is I do think that the compromise of bringing this to the policy subcommittee makes a great deal of sense so that we can have that conversation and get a policy in writing that we can then move from. I understand that there's a time constraint in that. I am hopeful that once the superintendent's office can poll us, I think I'm still on that one, that we'll be able to schedule that as soon as possible, recognizing that there is a time lag in that. And I, you know, certainly, again, I go from past experience that my understanding has been that the mayor does have the capacity to manage the agenda and would have the ability to refuse to add items. So if they were, if they were kind of rogue meetings, they could be eliminated. Okay.
All right, you made the motion, Mr. Nutter, what was the motion?
The motion was to take my motion and Mr. Dakota's motion and move them both to the policy subcommittee.
I need a second on that. Ms. Martin, Mr. Dakota, you agree with that?
Yes.
We should indicate what motion it is, because he has a couple.
It's item number 7.111 and item number 7.x11.
Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyy?
No.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Six shays, one nay, approved.
Next, we have, okay. By Mr. Nutter, "School committee work with administration and school, city attorneys reviewing developing policies regarding marijuana screening and employment requirements based on changes to state law." Need a second? By Ms. Martin, Mr. Nutter?
Again, with the marijuana law going into effect here in the state of Massachusetts, I don't know if our policy right now that we, I don't know whether we screen for marijuana or we don't screen for marijuana. And I don't know how the federal law, which, you know, because we collect federal money, I don't know how that would play into it. So I think we need to have our lawyers look and see, you know, what that does to any policy we have for screening new employees and whether marijuana should be, continue to be tested for or if it should be dropped.
Any further comment? Mr. Hoyy?
Yeah, I just have one, to you, Mayor, to the superintendent. To me, I think you're as sharp as lawyers in the city, so do you feel there could be any kickback with a motion like this? I just want your opinion, please.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think this is a discussion that's going on in all districts that I know of. Every district is talking about the new changes in law in light of what Mr. Nutter said. The state says one thing, the federal government says something else. So it's a very complicated area of the law. I don't think that anyone has really come up with the clear, distinct solution and how we're going to tackle that. They keep us informed though, as they're working on it, the various groups. And I'm pretty sure, well, when we do have something to bring to the floor, we'll bring it as an amendment to our policy or a change to our policy. But it is an area that is quite delicate because as per state law, we're supposed to act a certain way. But given that we're recipients of federal funds, I also do not know, not that we have heard of any cases where the federal government has acted on this, but not to say that they will not, I do not know.
Okay, thanks. It's a subject we had, perhaps, ask our delegation also what's going on at the state regarding this. The first change might be at the state level, so, you know...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
They have no idea yet either.
They have no idea.
The state, it has the superintendent point out, every community is facing this.
That's the point, but I'm just saying, get some information of what the state's looking at also. Because the state has to look at, you know, they're dealing with federal laws and reimbursements and things like that. Okay.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yeah, this is exactly the kind of motion that, there is no way we're going to be able to give you a date of approximation what it's going to do. I think all we can say is both the city, the last time we had this discussion, the city solicitor is aware of it, the, our attorney is aware of it, and they are working, they worked together on it, and I am sure they're keeping their radar on this issue. As soon as they know something, they'll let us know.
All right. All in favor? Motion passes. All right, the next, by Mr. Lay, "Request superintendent to investigate..." Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Nutter. Okay. "School committee work with," by Mr. Nutter, "School committee work with administration and school, city attorney, developing a policy in regards to service animals for disabled versus comfort animals in Lowell Public Schools." Need a second? By Ms. Doherty, Mr. Nutter?
Again, this is, this is something that's going on not only in the state, but throughout the country and in all sorts of industries. We've seen the airlines, you know, taking a stand against the use of some of these things. And I think I emailed the superintendent something of a story that I read in The Globe that somebody asked me if we had a policy on it. And I'm not sure if we do, but there is some very strict laws, whether you can have, you know, service animals for the disabled compared to comfort animals. So I just think it's something we need to address.
All in favor? Motion passes. Next, by Mr. Lay, "Request superintendent to investigate strategies to increase parent engagement in all schools, including our PTO, citywide parent councils, and school site council." Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, second? By Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I add, friends with Lowell High into that category as well? We all, in the past, we all wanted to have stronger parents involvement. Students will perform better, schools will, we will have better school in that way. And so in the past, we, I know we have PTOs and citywide parent councils, et cetera, but we just want to have, find a strategy, a better way, maybe an extra way, we go extra mile, just to find a way to get more parents involved from different neighborhoods. Some parents, you know, may say that they're not, they don't understand, or they don't feel comfortable going to the PTO or citywide, citywide parent council, or friends with Lowell High. But, so if we could find a strategy, we start talking about how, how to find a different approach to, to make this, parents get more involved. That would be, that would be my goal.
Mr. Hoyy?
I like the motion. I just think some of the strategies we have to look at is to change the way we do things. Some schools, like the Pine School, the Riley School, the Daly School, they can get a lot of participation. They get people, and some schools struggle. And I went to Nashua recently to look at a school. It was called the Dr. Crisp School in Nashua, and the place was packed with people. And I said, "Wow," you know, to myself, and it was because of what they did. They had like a bingo night, and they had a spaghetti supper going at the same time, and it was wall-to-wall people. But I think what we do, there's many things I want to say on this, and I think it's a great motion, Dominic, but we have to do something too. We have to maybe open up our schools, maybe for an hour, like after 5:00. I know a lot of people because I live near a basketball court. Maybe if we open the doors to our schools, I know it's more money, but maybe we can do it with less money. There are custodians there, and I know we charge for our schools, so, you know, when we rent them out, we make a lot of money too. I think we made $300,000 or $400,000 renting our school out, don't hold me. But I think maybe if we opened it for the neighborhood kids and stuff, that could maybe bring some people into participation, that's all. Nice motion, Dominic.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Okay. Next, we have, "By Mr. Lay, 'Request superintendent to explore feasibility of offering MTEL, Massachusetts test for education, educator's licensure, workshops in order to increase qualified diverse teacher candidates.'" Second, by Mr. Hoyy? Mr. Lay?
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor, Mr. Mayor. We have been trying to recruit diverse staffs into our school system, and we have not really successfully doing so. So here in Lowell, we have plenty of minority students who went to Lowell High, graduated with bachelor degree, but they're not in a technical field, so they may be working somewhere else other than what they studied for. You know, they may be working in a supermarket or a bank, doing, being a tailor or something. So, so if we offer this MTEL, I think we may create these pipelines of candidates that we could recruit into our school, maybe, I'm not sure, you know, there's a possibility there. So I don't know what, if that's possible or not. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, Superintendent, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a clarification question, Mr. Lay. When we talk about the, offering this class of MTEL, do you mean to the greater community or just to the Lowell Public School community, meaning our employees, paraprofessional, whatever, or is it just to the greater community?
I believe that to the greater community is probably what we need because we already have the staff in our school community already, so we just need to reach out more to the greater community in Lowell. It's, it's to be discussed, I guess, whether we should offer it further away through surrounding towns as well, I don't know. But I just feel that offering MTEL through our school system, we will create this pool of applicants that are available to join our school system.
The reason I'm asking this is because we, I've, when we saw these motions, of course, we look at them to try to estimate what it would take for us to respond. And I had the discussion already with my assistant in curriculum and the LTA coordinator, which is, the LTA stands for the, our teachers academy, the Lowell Teachers. And I, we do have already an app, a program that was set up, and it's very, very elaborate, very well-designed. It's over a few sessions. It includes seven sessions of three hours each, and the cost is very minimal, it's not really that much, it's $100. It's not to make any money, but it's to cover the cost of the instructor. It's not to make any money, but it's to cover the cost of the instructor. And currently, our, our paraprofessionals, our employees take it. It's only open to our own community. So, it's, for us, it's really easy. It's already there, it's designed, and it's just a matter of making it happen more often or, you know, to accommodate a larger group. All we really need is really, if we want to do, submit your motion, is to get an approval from the school committee to open it up to the larger community. And, and that would be the same cost, because the cost of per participant is, is currently a hundred dollar to, for our employees, for the entire course.
That sounds wonderful, actually.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I, I like the superintendent's idea about that because, the thing that I'm leery about in your specific, your motion, is the MTEL exam is an extremely difficult exam to pass. A lot of kids that come out of colleges and already have taken ed courses to become teachers have to take the test two to three times sometimes, just to pass it. So, I don't, I wouldn't want to discourage kid, people who are interested to be educators to be dissuaded in because they're not passing that test. So, I think the superintendent's idea of how we're approaching our, our staff right now and expanding it perhaps, but I think that approach, I think, has a lot more sensibility to it.
Mr. Houghey? Yes. Andy's touched a few things that I want to say, but what I feel like this past school committee with Mayor Kennedy was here anyways, I know we, we worked hard on diversity. I thought, looking at our paraprofessionals that have a, they already have like a bachelor's degree. And what I'm afraid about something like this is we don't hire someone that's a certified teacher. That's my only concern. I have a niece that's now a certified teacher, a cousin, rather, and it took her seven or eight tries to get through the test. So, that's my only concern, is I want to make sure we're getting qualified candidates to be teachers. But I think when you talk diversity with the hiring, I think it all comes down to some HR work, Dominic. And the past two school committees, in my opinion only, we've had some problems with HR. And I think as this night evolves, you're gonna maybe hear some more things that might make you feel better. It's not like I don't support something like this, but my concern is that I'm not gonna get a certified teacher. So, that's all I want to say, thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, so.
I think this is a really important motion in the sense that we do need to focus on hiring more diverse teachers. I mean, in my four years at Lowell High, I've probably had around 36 teachers between semester classes changes, and I can't think of one teacher who was a person of color that I've had. And if our teacher body was representative of our student body, ideally, it would be two-thirds people of color, and it's not. So, it's just something that really needs to, we need to have a larger conversation about it, and there needs to be something done. So, that's why I'm a huge advocate for this motion, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lay? And Mr. Dakota?
Well, Mr. Dakota brought a great point when he said that MTEL is a very difficult test to pass. But, so, you know, to be a teacher, you need to have a bachelor degree. And I believe if you have a bachelor degree, I, I hope that you'll be able to study and, and could take the MTEL test. Because it is difficult. Therefore, this may be a great way to, to initiate the, the attempt that we want to help you to become successful, to be, to be working with us in our school system. And the people who take the test are mostly the Lowell residents, and I'm pretty sure that most of them are Lowell High graduate also, who went to college and got the bachelor degree, that came back to live in Lowell. So.
Mr. Houghey? Real quick, Mayor, thank you. I'm gonna support the motion, only because I, I'm looking at your desire to help, help the minority community, and I think I'm behind you on that. So, it's only to explore the feasibility.
But, that's not, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
But I'm gonna support it, Dominic.
Thank you.
I know how much it means to you, so it's no big deal. The superintendent's gonna look into it.
Just want to add one more thing, maybe, Mr. Mayor. Just saying that since Mr. Superintendent said it doesn't cost extra anyway, so it, it doesn't cost us anything more than that we already spent. So, it's a win-win situation from what I see.
Mr. Dakota?
Just one quick thing pertaining to the acquisition of diversity for our teachers. The entire country is having the same difficulty of trying to find diversity for their teaching staff. It's not just something the indigenous to Lowell. We have been trying desperately to do it, but it's, it's tough to get these people to come to us. And they're, it's a very small pool to draw from. So, that's what makes it also difficult, and, and that pool is, is shrinking by the day. I think that we're looking at a, a teacher shortage overall in a few years. When all of the baby boomers are finally retired, myself included in that group of baby boomers, I think we're gonna have a severe shortage across the country. And I, you know, that's a big concern, but I support your motion, Noorah. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's really, we have it already, as I said, this, we, we could answer this really quickly with a short proposal to just essentially present to you what it would be to duplicate the program that we have, just to open it up to the, to the larger community. But I just wanted to point out on a related point, on a good note, is we, we have established that program because of our paraprofessionals who are very diverse group, is the most diverse group that we have. And when we surveyed the paraprofessionals, 90% response was positive that they did want to take this to try to pursue a career in teaching. So, we're very encouraged by that.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Next, by Ms. Doherty. We know that, okay. A motion by Ms. Doherty, request superintendent provide the committee with a report that describes each elementary and middle school's outdoor play space, including whether they have a play structure, none, one, or two, available for students used during recess. Ms. Doherty? Oh, I need a second by Mr. Houghey. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm not looking to get a whole bunch of work to do this. I really want just an overview, assessment of what each of our schools has to offer our students in terms of outdoor play space. It, it really speaks to our whole movement as a country and as a district towards educating the whole child. And I gotta tell you just this one little story. You know, we do those community reader days. So, I was at a school, and I always do a little pitch about I'm on the school committee and its elected position, and what do you want me to know at the end, after I read a book? And this one little first grader, he raised his hand, I called him, he said, "Could we please have a playground at our school?" And I'm like, "You don't have a playground?" And that's what prompted this, because the very same day, it was community reader day, I was at a different school that had two playgrounds. It was a K to eight school, and they were getting a third one that was gonna be adaptive for our physically challenged children. And I thought, we gotta provide equity, we gotta have play structures for all our schools. So, this is just an attempt to get a, a take on what that looks like. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Houghey. You can go first, Mr. Superintendent, if you want to go first, go ahead.
No, it's fine.
All right. I just, I just wanted to say, I think this is a great motion. If we look back to Mr. Nutter's motion a few weeks ago about recess, we all know we're gonna get more recess. And I'm not sure, but Mayor, you might want to check on a school that you know a lot about, the Botlet. I think I heard they don't have any play area. So, you might want to check on that right away, because I know like the Washington School got a big parking lot, and most places are pretty good, but, okay, thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a point of clarification, when you, when you're referring to playgrounds, are you referring to playgrounds offered by the schools or playgrounds by the city? Because there is a big difference, as you may know.
Good question. I don't care if it's, if it's a city playground that they have access to, that works.
Yeah. The, the reason is that most principals that I talk to, just talking to a few today regarding this motion, and they do point out that they, while they may have access technically and theoretically access to a playground, that is not a school playground, but a public school playground, because it's open and because it, they can't manage whether there are no sharp tools in it or something dangerous, that they often choose not to use it. Because I know this case came about a couple of years ago when we got several pictures from the Lincoln School playground next to the Lincoln School. And we, you know, it was one of those cases that we always have to call the city to clean it up first before we can even use it. And by the time they get to use it, it's now back to needing to be cleaned. So, the issue of control of the playground plays a big, big, big factor in the principal's decision whether they allow the kids to go to use the playground or not. And also, the availability of equipment, certain public playgrounds, you might have 150 kids that go on recess at once, and they may have only two swings. So, that it becomes more of a nightmare for the principals and the teachers to manage it and what to do. So, I think, you know.
I would include that information then in the report. If you're talking about a school like the McGavinous, say, there's a playground across the street, which I would assume is close enough that they could go within, once we expand the recess time, they could go and have some time out there. But if that school, if that playground is not safe for our children. But I would ask, even the playgrounds that are right on our school grounds, do we maintain them clean, or does the city keep them clean?
If the schools, if it is a school playground, it's usually maintained by our own custodians, and the principals make sure that they, they are better maintained and safe for our children. But, but when, when it's an open ground playground for the whole community, you can't tell people not to use it. I mean, and you have no idea who used it before you and what they left there.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Mr. Doherty, you want to come up? It's my turn. Your turn.
So, the next motion is by Mayor William Samaris. Request the city auditor provide the school committee with a report on all school department budget and financial issues. Report shall include, but not be limited to, the entering of the FY 2018 school budget into the city's financial system and the school budget's compliance with all city financial regulations and the city budget. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Martin, Mr. Mayor Samaris.
Thank you. Now, this is not to indicate that anything is wrong, but the thing is, I have found, since I've been on the school committee's side, that there have been questions about the budget or issues about the budget, how certain things are laid out. And what I want to do is make sure that the school department budget is in compliance with the rules and regulations of the city council and the city budget. It's a simple matter. And it, if mistakes have been made or if we've taken a different approach on the school committee's side, and from all investigations that I've had, things have been correct. But it creates a problem when we have a different approach to something. The numbers, in a sense, sometimes don't match, or questions are raised that wouldn't normally be raised if we complied with the same rules and regulations. Also, what I want to ensure, that there is even stronger communication between our budget people in the school department and the budget people on the city's side. We've got some serious issues in the school committee to face during this year regarding the budget, and I want to make sure that we're very clear as to monies that have been expended, monies that we have, and future monies that will be available. The more we talk, the more the two budget areas do talk and coincide with each other, the better off the system is.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Houghey?
Yeah. I like working with mayors. It's a lot of fun. I wish I did it for about 15, 16 years, but I spread it out a little bit. But I know Mayor Kennedy had a rough ride the first year and a half. It was unbelievable. I've never seen a mayor go through it. I, I do like your motion, Bill. I mean, why not get along and show people everything? But the thing I think we need to express to you is, you know, the outgoing manager said we don't watch our money. I don't believe that. I've been involved in negotiations with a few of my colleagues, and I think we did a great job. The first contract we settled, I believe, if I'm wrong, correct me, I think it was 3.75 or 4%, that's what the teachers got. The next one, with, at that time, I'm pretty sure the city gave their help all at least 6% raise for each year. And I'm not looking to throw stones at anybody right now, but you did sit on the Facility Subcommittee. You know how many problems we have with our schools. And like Mr. Gignac says, we have renters and indirect costs, maintenance of effort. We really haven't had a good, to me, a fair shake coming from the city. And again, I'm only one vote, but that's my opinion. And we're really hurting for a couple of million dollars right now to not scare our staff and say we're gonna lay them off. So, Mayor, I'm gonna go along with you, because I'm here to help you. So, I'm gonna support your motion, but I think we need to tell you a few things about what we need also, and that's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Any other comments on the motion? Superintendent, and then we'll go back to Mr., to Mayor Samaris.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Madam Chair. We welcome this. We absolutely welcome it. And I just want to, as a reminder, that the city auditor is also the school auditor, so he does not need our permission to come in and examine the books, which he does. He does, he has access to every part of our books, and we're in constant discussion with him. We don't often, we don't, we, we all, we often agree, and sometimes we don't. And we make it very clear why we do not agree with him. And, and in some cases, you know, we prevailed, and in some cases, he prevailed in terms of procedures and so forth. We're, we're absolutely welcome this, because it should, it will put to rest some of the questions, because there is no doubt in my mind that we have been, from the day one that I arrived here, I looked at the books that were presented by my predecessor, and the books later on that were developed by our administration, that it, we play by the book, and, and we're very transparent. So, we absolutely welcome this, to put those questions to rest.
I mean, thank you, Mr. Superintendent. I mean, and Mr. Houghey, I'm not questioning, as I said, I wanted to make sure that there is clarity between, you know, the two budgets. And when you talk about upcoming financial problems and what have you, I think this also, because we'll have the auditor and the financial people also making a report, not just only to the superintendent, but I expect it to be made to the committee as a whole. And so, we can discuss issues of finance. And what better way of talking about what our problems are than have the people who watch the money, guard the money, and know where the money is, so to speak? That's what I'm interested, I'm interested in more communication. More communication makes for really stronger positions, and it also, it also will, I think, be very beneficial to the school system and the children that we support.
Mr. Houghey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, Bill, the only thing I think, I like the motion a lot, but I think as much as we have to keep an eye on what the school is doing, I think the city has to come out and be a little bit more open-minded on, on those cost heating problems, all our problems across our schools, you know them. So, that's good. If you're gonna look at us and keep us straight, and this motion means we're gonna keep the city straight, I gotta vote for your motion, okay? So.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next motion is by Mr. Dakota to ask the superintendent to request an evaluation of all current useful and/or new equipment that is currently in the high school. That equipment should be salvaged by us and not the demolition company. Second on that motion?
Second.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. This motion came about, I was at a cheerleading competition in the, can I say Field House? Is it legal for us to say Field House? In the Field House, and I was looking up at the ceiling, and there were these amazing Voice of the Theater speakers and horns up at the top, on the ceiling. And I know from my, you know, from my rock and roll days, and people are gonna find that hard to believe, but I, having those kinds of speakers, only the professionals ever, ever got to use those. They're very expensive speakers, they're just sitting up in that ceiling. And, and I can remember having a conversation with And I can remember having a conversation with the then AD, De Profio, who, and I said, "I can tell you why your speakers aren't working. You don't have enough amplification power for them." And that was the reason behind the fact that they couldn't use those speakers. They just didn't have enough power to power them. But I think, I don't want a demolition company to get their hands on those speakers, because they are highly, 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 just like an incredible quality speaker, to have in whatever facility we end up with for the new high school. So I don't want us to lose that, and it does ask for looking at all other newer equipment that the school has, that we should hold on to these things. We should still have these. It's great to have a lot of new furniture and a lot of other new things to come into the, into the high school, when the new high school is built, but I think we need to, if we can hold on to some of these items, I think it's important to do that.
Any other comments? Mr. Hoi?
I think it's another good motion. I remember one time, a long time ago, I put a motion in to see how much stuff was stolen out of each school. And it came back, it was something like $50,000 or $60,000 worth of things that were stolen. So I think you have to keep your eye on all things like that. So, I'll support this motion. Thank you.
Are we all set? Okay. The superintendent here? Okay.
We're good.
All right. Next motion by Mr. Dakota. All Subcommittee meetings shall be scheduled by the explicit--
Oh, you skipped one.
Sorry, stepped out.
7/11.
All right. Shouldn't have stepped out. Ask the superintendent, ask the city auditor, what percentage of Lowell's budget went to the school department before Ed reform? Second?
You missed one.
I did?
7/11. That's XI.
I don't know. I'm not going to step out anymore. Is this the music? It's supposed to help me. Very top on the music?
Just this one. She did the top one, Mr. Doherty.
All right. I have to speak to my clerk about--
About all the musicals.
Okay. Mr. Dakota, let's try this one, okay?
Okay.
Ask the superintendent to look into how all musical equipment found in our schools should be evaluated and shared by all schools. Need a second? By Ms. Doherty?
This motion is based on the fact that several years ago, I know that they, the current Fine Arts Department Chair, Dr. Clark, went about and got all of this information about all of the music programs across the city, to find out exactly what they had. And I know in past years, everyone is very territorial about whatever they have in their building, they're going to keep in their building, and they don't want to lose anything, even though then they haven't used it for 20 years. It's just going, it's theirs and it's in their building. I think there were a lot of schools that have some music teachers that would kill to have a couple of pieces of percussion that this school doesn't use at all. If it's something that's just sitting there collecting dust, and some other school can use it, I think we should be able to, like, transport these things from one school to another. I think it's, if it's something the city owns and the school department owns, I think we should be able to have that. And stop being so territorial about things. If it was something that we got, and we got to hold on to it, and I think that really, that philosophy has to change on this, because musical instruments and equipment are very, very expensive, getting more expensive by the day. So it harkens back to my speaker issue in the, in the Fieldhouse, but I think using that study that Dr. Clark did several years ago, I know she has all that information. It would be a simple, simple matter to go through and decide where things are, and kind of put that out as a possible list to all the music faculty, to say, you know, well, this is available at the Stock closer, and this is available at the Wang, and this is available at the Green Elch, and something, we can swap over something. If it's something you need to borrow, I think it's something like that, we should be able to, be able to do that right across the city.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes, through you to the superintendent. I remember last year, I asked you about the Robinson School. There were some string instruments that were put in the back shelf, because I believe it was over a stipend that that school gets to have, like, guitarists and violins and But the motion is good if we can just look around the schools, just to see what we can do, but did we get affected with, did we cut stipends for music in our middle schools? No. You might want to look into the Robinson School for me, because I think we, at that school, that was cut, and the instruments are put away. I just know that happened last year, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Dakota, just a question. Are you also talking about possibly refurbishing some of that equipment? I mean, does that--
That could possibly take place as well. I mean, if you're looking at some violins or some cellos that are so expensive, but all they need is a $3.50 piece of wood that kind of forms a bridge on that, and it's, that's been salvaged by investing $3.50, I think that's a great, a great investment. And I think that if we were to pursue having the string initiative that we've been participating in with the university, I think that's kind of gone, the interest has kind of waned on that, but I'd like to see that survive, revived, I should say, because Lowell had an orchestra at the high school back in the day. And now, it's trying to get 10 kids to play. It's tough. So I think if we kind of revive these instruments that are just city collecting dust in some closet, so be it. I think it'd be great.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Motion passes. Next by Mr. Dakota. Ask the superintendent, ask the city auditor, what percentage of Lowell's budget went to the school department before education reform? A second? By Ms. Martin.
This kind of harkens back to what Mr. Hoi referred to, about making sure the city is contributing what we think it should be contributing to us, to the school department. I think we need to look at that number, and say that it's not just the state's responsibility for teaching our kids, I think the city's responsibility of teaching our kids, and making sure we can have enough financial wherewithal to do that job. So I think that's the point of that request.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right.
Mr. Superintendent, I mean, Mr. Mayor. Just, I mean, that's kind of an open-ended question, depending how far you want it to go back. In 1975, Lowell had a budget of $16.6 million. That was the entire school budget, paid for by the city of Lowell. And at that time, the Lowell Sun took out a full-page, back-page editorial with written suggestions on how to cut $1 million out of that budget. In 1991, 1992, we had a $44.3 million budget. Eight million came from the state. The city paid for the rest. When Ed reform passed in 1993, the budget for the school '93, '94 was $58.2 million. The city paid roughly $17.5 million of that. In 1995, because of Ed reform, the '94, '95, or '95, '96 school year, it went up to $65 million, and the city actually paid $16.5. So they went from paying 100% to 30% to 25%. As you know now, the state pays the largest share of our budget. Under the Ed Reform Act, the city is told what percentage they have to pay. So in Lowell's case, on the upcoming budget, Lowell has to roughly pay 26% of that. However, you know, there's a lot of things to consider in that percentage, because of charter schools, of transportation, of, you know, maintenance of effort. So, there's a lot of things. I mean, back in the, in the early days, it was before you had the buyback of sick leave, and you had people retiring, like the mayor at $102,000 in sick time. That doesn't happen. Hopefully, we've capped a lot of that, so that it doesn't happen anymore. But, you know, the post-employment benefits that the cities now have to pay, every city, including Lowell, has more liability than they do assets at this time, because of things like that. So, I just think, trying to go backwards to see what they used to pay, you know, 30%, 25%, 100%, because of Ed reform, because of all the different now, you know, rules and regulations, and, you know, mandates, unfunded mandates that we get, you know, the city is told how much we have to pay. And, you know, it's a percentage of money. I mean, it's very sad that in cash contribution, in cash, last year, the city gave 6.5% of $124,764,518 that they collected in taxes. If you look at what their projection is for this year, it's around the same percentage. And since we're getting less in cash, we're only getting about 4.5%. The trouble is, when the city tells us that they're giving us, when the city tells everybody that they're giving us $15 million in cash, it's not exactly 100% factual. They are giving it to us. However, $9 million of that is to pay for transportation, which does not count to our net school spending requirements, nor does it count to the city's net school spending requirements. So they're actually only giving us $6 million, $6.2 million in cash this year. And it's, it's just something that, you know, we need to work with them. I know there's been a lot of talk on the, on the maintenance of effort agreement, but we still need to work with them to get more of a cash contribution. We had voted, as a school committee, in January, to request that the city do what the superintendent has been doing since he has arrived here, which is he breaks out the transportation costs, so people can see what the city is giving us. We voted for that. The mayor has not brought that to the council as of yet, or if he has, he hasn't done it in a, in a formal meeting. But it's something that we need to pursue, to ask them to take that transportation, and break it out, and make it clear to the taxpayers of Lowell, that when you're paying $124 million in your tax money, only 6.5% is going to fund your schools. And I know that the council has given more money, and, and under Kevin Murphy, they have met and exceeded net school spending, which they had not done prior to that. And we're, we're getting better, but we're still not there yet.
Any further discussion on this matter? Superintendent, any discussion? Thank you. All in favor? Motion passes. All right, next, we have the Finance Subcommittee meeting approval of minutes of the meeting of March 21, 2018. Report has already been given to the last school committee meeting. I need a motion from Mr. Nutter to accept the report as a report in progress, and he seconded it. Mr. Nutter, the second by Mr. Dakota. Thank you. All in favor? Motion accepted. Next, the reports of the superintendent. The first one, under 9-1, is update Human Resources Director position. I know, I know we also had some speakers, but, Mr. Superintendent, do you want to--
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As my very short report says, our interim Human Resource Director, Ms. Mulligan, has graciously accepted to delay her retirement plans. Will remain in this position until September 30, 2018. We would like to conduct a search for a new Human Resource Director to start hopefully by October 1st. I have since then, just this afternoon, talked to her. She relieved the pressure on us even further by saying that she will commit to stay until we get a replacement, so that we're not tied to a specific date, and to also, even when we do hire somebody, to allow for an overlap, so that the transition is smooth. What we would like to do is, given the importance of this, given that the effort that everybody is asking us for, to escalate our efforts in diverse hiring or diversity, and paying more attention to that, I think we really need to focus on getting a professional search firm. HR is not our area of expertise. Our area of expertise is education and managing schools. When we hire a principal, it's really easy for us to get other principals on the school committee, on the school search team, and, and community members and so forth, and put it together. When we hire a teacher, we get other teachers to look, to, to talk to them before we make a decision. In the case of an HR director with the specific skills that we're looking for, I think it, we would like to look outside and look at professional firms that can come and help this community to recruit some, somebody in that position. At this point in time, I'm not asking for action specifically, because we're, we're going to be collecting first proposals, and then you would have the last say in looking at these proposals and accepting one of them if you do decide to accept one. Thank you.
We have, we have a number of speakers, but does anybody on the floor want to speak for us before we--
We're going to be able to speak after the speakers?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Clerk, please go.
Sofan Smith.
Just so everybody will know, you have three minutes to speak on this matter, because there's a number of speakers.
Just my luck that I get to go first. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sofan Smith, and I'm here tonight to share a very brief story. As you said, I only have three minutes. Many, many friends of mine have always asked me, "Why do I work in the city of Boston?" For over 10 years, I have commuted from here to Boston, dealing with traffic from one and a half to sometimes two hours, going there and coming back as well. And one of my main responses, as I told one of my friends, was that, "I don't think Lowell wants me." You see, I'm a Lowellian. I was raised in the city. I may not have been born here, but I feel like I was, because I have been here since I was a baby. I went through the Lowell Public School system. I'm a daily grad, including Lowell High School, class of 1997. Mr. Samaras, you were my headmaster then. I was president of student government. I was in your office so many times at one point, that when you saw me come down the hall, you would turn and tell the secretary that you weren't there.
I ran.
I know you ran. You were in good physical shape. I saw that. After Lowell High, I also went to UMass Lowell, and that's where I studied and received my bachelor's. And so, during my time here, I started to look for work in Lowell, because, again, this is my city. This is where I grew up at. This is all that I know. And so many places had turned me down, and apparently, my resume was not good enough. My credentials were not good enough. My ability to speak another language was not good enough. And so then I looked to Boston, and they hired me. And so, over a course of a decade-plus, I was able to work with many great nonprofits, including with the city of Boston, many great universities. And my last position was with State Street Bank, and I am in the recruiting business. That's what I do. So I understand very well on this topic right here. Unfortunately, I don't do diversity recruiting, but that may be next on my list here. And so my, my goal of sharing our stories with you is to, hopefully, for you not to only just listen, but hear why it's so important to have diversity in the workplace. And when we think of diversity, automatically, most of us think of race. And diversity encompass so much more. It is race, it is gender, it's background, it's education, it is even a person's tenure, it is their cognitive style when they're, when they're hired for the workplace. So it's a lot more, and I hope that these are all things that you will take into consideration as you make this important decision hiring the next HR director. Because no matter how you define diversity, we can agree that diversity is important in our world, in our city, and especially in the Lowell Public Schools. So ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Crystal Robert.
My name is Crystal Roberts, and I'm a parent of two children in Lowell Public Schools. And I also can speak as a former substitute teacher who worked in some of the schools and has seen the diversity or lack of in the schools. I've had the privilege of standing at the bus stop next to the high school with my children, and have watched our student body, which is very diverse, come into the school, and also the staff, which is unfortunately not very diverse, and the neighborhood notices. As a parent of two children who are Asian, I'm nervous. I'm sorry. Public speaking isn't my favorite thing.
You're doing fine.
My two children are half Nepalese, so they're Asian. And they have only had a couple-- And they have only had a couple teachers who are Asian. They don't think that's an issue, but the fact that they don't see that as an issue concerns me. They asked me why it matters, and my explanation to them was that we want our students to know that they can be a teacher, that it isn't limited by your privilege. Um, and also, drawing a blank.
Take your time.
Um, the other comment that I wanted to make is that my son pointed out that the reason why we don't see a lot of Asians in the schools teaching is because that they want to be doctors and lawyers and do things that make more money, which in itself is a microaggression. And he knows what a microaggression is, but it slipped out. They're both amazing kids, and we live here in Lowell. I'm originally from Gloucester. Um, we've stayed because it is such a diverse community, and it's something I'm proud of. I hope that the school system does do something about the issue because it is a big problem if the kids aren't seeing people who are like them that can relate to them. That was the other thing I wanted to mention, is people of diverse backgrounds will be better able to relate to the children that they're teaching. As a substitute teacher, I sat and listened to one teacher talking about how our children in the school, um, were not taking expensive vacations, um, over a break. I had come in on a day that was right after a break. And she stated something about, you know, these kids would just go into the movies, they were in the house. We never should have a teacher looking at our children with judgment. People who are coming from their background, I think, would be more likely to understand where they're coming from, and maybe instead of making a judgmental comment, offer an opportunity to those children. Um, so that's pretty much all I had to say.
Thank you.
Laura Ortiz.
Thank you for letting me speak. So, um, my first experience in Lowell started in nineteen eighty-seven when I came to the university, and it was, um, a negative one, surrounded by, um, the arguments over desegregation and integrating the students into the school. And so here I stand thirty years later, and the diversity astounds me because you just don't have a lot of it. Um, affirmative action and desegregation go hand in hand. I think it was easier for Boston public schools because they were ordered as part of the desegregation to get to about a twenty percent of the minority being, um, staffed in the schools. I think that's something that you can achieve. Um, I know the desegregation specifically says that you're, and the superintendent is responsible for it. I would like to see this human resource position go to something where you have a policy that you are actually actively getting a, a quota or ratio, whatever you want to call it, to bring diversity into the school because no matter who you're gonna hire, I, I don't really think you're gonna get that if you don't have that. Um, I, I've heard some comments of resistance, and no disrespect if we have, um, a difference of opinion and stuff, but I think it's important for, you know, like the other speaker spoke, you know, you want children to see what the world is, and the world is diverse. And if they go into every classroom and it's the same types of teachers with the same types of backgrounds and not seeing diversity, and they're not gonna really succeed that well in life. We want them to be well-rounded and get a hundred percent education, and I think it starts with diversity. And, um, no disrespect to the policies that you have, I just think that we can do, um, we can do a lot better. And I know that given that we have a financial crisis type of thing, you know, there's no, there's no reason that we can't, as you're hiring teachers, um, hire more and more diverse so that it, it does reflect it. You know, um, one example to me was, um, a little bit unrelated, was a high school student saying that they literally, that the only ones, um, that are elected to any type of office are the seniors. I think that's a perfect example. So you have the younger grades that aren't elected to any type of council. That doesn't make any sense, and I think that's a reflection of what goes on here. Um, type of thing, you, you know, you, you want everyone included, and if you have more diversity, I think that you're gonna be able to, um, to achieve that. And you're gonna actually, um, go into line. And one last thing I wanted to mention was is the desegregation order also talked about the bilingual, um, parents' councils, and it's supposed to be part of the order, and I haven't seen one. And I think that's part of the reason why we don't have diversity, is we don't have these councils that we were supposed to have. And that's thirty years. And so, um, I don't really know what else can be done, but I, I think that it's time to start to listen to the minority groups that are here and charge to, um, bring the diversity that should have been here thirty years later. But thank you for your time. Um, I do appreciate that you listened to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Marissa Shea.
Um, I'm a resident of Lowell, fifty-seven Marshall Street. Um, so I'm speaking as a community member, and I'm also speaking as a teacher and, um, thinking and speaking with my students in mind. Um, so I just want to start by saying that the notion that there are not enough qualified folks of color to hire as teachers is racist, and it's insulting and personally insulting to me because I've actually had coworkers say that to me before. Um, so I'm here to speak in favor of hiring a new HR director that has experience hiring, um, deserve, uh, diverse staff, but also it's really important to hire somebody that knows how to create an inclusive, uh, safe community for the people once they get there. Um, so the numbers don't lie. Seventy percent of students of color in Lowell and like ninety percent of the staff and faculty are white. So this is an example of institutional racism. That's, that's what that is. Um, so, you know, our students need people that, they need teachers that look like them. If they don't see teachers that look like them, it silently says to them, you can't be teachers. And I mean, this is something that I think every speaker has touched on. Um, and so then they don't become teachers, right? And so then generation after generation, this is how this diversity problem is perpetuated because we don't have people, folks of color that are becoming teachers because they didn't see, they didn't have those role models when they were younger. Um, so you might not be able to tell, but I am Puerto Rican, and in a city where eleven percent of our population is Puerto Rican, it matters that I am Puerto Rican and that I'm a teacher and that I talk about it with my students. Um, I have seen in my classes Puerto Rican students become more respectful and more hard working once they find out that I'm Puerto Rican. So hiring folks of color will have the same effect. It will improve academic outcomes for more students. And not only that, after Hurricane Maria happened, I've been able to connect with a Puerto Rican students all across the Daley Middle School. Um, we talk about how our family's doing, how is everything? And so I've been able to build deeper relationships than probably a lot of white teachers would be able to, just because we, it's a different experience and you can't necessarily relate in the same way. And so, uh, everybody knows in this room, building deep relationships with students, that's crucial to student outcomes. Um, and so at the Daley, I would say about sixty to seventy percent of my students are Asian. We only have two Asian teachers at the entire school, and I like, my heart breaks for my students. You know, about fifty percent of them, I would say, are Cambodian, and I can read books about Cambodian history and culture, but at the end of the day, I'm not Cambodian, and so I'm just not gonna be able to relate to them in that same way. Um, so hiring a diverse workforce, that's one part of it, but then maintaining a diverse work, workforce is an entirely different issue. Um, let's see, how do I explain this? So we, if we're hiring folks of color, but we're not creating a space where folks of color feel comfortable, they're, they're not gonna stick around, right? So, um, just a quick example, I'm, I hear a lot of racist comments and jokes made regularly. I would, I would say like probably one a day. Um, somebody once made a racist joke about Puerto Ricans, and I, you know, confronted them about them, but I'll tell you what, I never ate lunch with those people again, right? So if we're bringing people in, um, we need to figure out how to also change the culture so that people don't want to leave after a year because they don't feel wel, welcome in the community. Um, and so, yeah, I think it's really important. I hope we find this, um, just, uh, start looking for an HR director that has, has experience doing this and also creating that welcoming school environment, too. Thank you.
I just quickly, my name is Vladimir Saldana, and I would like to just point out, if you're here because of this request, please stand up. Just, just stand up or raise your hand, whatever you want to do. God, wow. You see that? You all see that? Um, next time, if there's this many people for a specific agenda item, kind of move it up. It'll, it'll help send kids here, home early to go to bed, just for practice. So, just saying, just wanted to say that. Um, now to my comment. Obviously, you know why I'm here. Um, should I read it? No, I'm not gonna read it because everybody already touched upon the thing that I was gonna say. And the last point that I want to make that is different from what has been said is that if we hire this search firm to do the work that they're hired to do, and that is to find the best and most qualified candidate to be in command of our school or second in command in our school, we are gonna see a greater return in what we're looking for as a goal. We talked about it a lot. We want more diverse teacher, we want more diverse staff, we want cultural competency, we want our school to represent our students in terms of staff and teachers, um, and administrators. This person that we hire next could come with those skills and the qualifying skills that we're looking for. But they're not, we're not gonna find them if we go the same model that we've been searching for our previous administrators and from a previous teacher. We're not gonna find that person. So let's be realistic, let's support this as a committee, let's back this request, and go out there and find the best qualifying candidate we can to be in charge of hiring, recruiting, and training a diverse workforce that we desperately need.
Um, as you know, my name is Darcy Boyer. I live here in Lowell. Um, I'm the parent of a second grader here in the Lowell Public Schools and a member of Lowell Education Justice Alliance. Um, I've come in support of Superintendent Calphali's proposal to hire a professional search firm in aid of hiring a new HR director, and ideally, one who has demonstrated experience and success in recruiting and maintaining a diverse workforce and who understands the need to foster a culture of, a culture and expectation of respect and racial justice in our schools. Many before me have spoken eloquently and honestly about the need for kids of color to see themselves in the schools. I'm gonna take this from a different angle. We should not underestimate the power of white students having teachers of color. Currently, what my son sees is that whiteness is the standard for which everything is measured. He sees it in the Eurocentric curriculum, in the staffing of our schools, and in our city government. In our schools, he sees that respected authority figures and experts look like him. In our government, he sees that those who make the decisions that affect our city also look like him. He needs to see, and he needs to see and know competent, respected people of color to counter the racist, divisive narrative that is often told in our media and by our political figures. We all benefit from exposure to diversity of opinions and experiences. Now, this is not an indictment of white teachers. We have many great ones in the schools. They are my friends, and they are my family. What this is an indictment of is a system that says it values Lowell's cultural, racial, and ethnic diversity, but does not reflect that in the makeup of its major institutions, our schools and our city government. A new and experienced HR director cannot work miracles, but they can help create a culture in our schools that recognizes and welcomes the strength and power that comes from our, our diversity. In voting to approve a search firm for this important position, the school committee can model for the city what an extensive, thoughtful, and inclusive hiring process looks like. On the fiftieth anniversary of the assassination of Martin Luther King Junior, we should not still be having this conversation, but here we are. On this day, let's vow to do better. Thank you.
Graduate, as well as a product of Lowell Public Schools from kindergarten until high school graduation about four years ago. Throughout my experience, one concept that always stood out to me was how such a diverse city lacked so much diversity in its staff and teachers. Diversity is something this city touts as one of its great strengths, yet it's one of the places it most needs improvement. I can count on one hand the number of teachers in all thirteen years of schooling I had that were of color. Diversity of cultures, ethnicities, and ideas can greatly improve how staff and teachers relate to both students and parents. I support the superintendent's proposal to hire a professional search firm because we can create tru, true change when we start with the correct mindset. The HR role is too important to just do what we've always done, and it hasn't worked. I implore the school committee to truly consider the cultural competencies of the next candidate and to make diversity in both hiring and retaining a top priority. Thank you.
Leanna Kushi.
Good evening. My name is Leanna Kushi. I am a Lowell resident, a homeowner in the Highlands, and a parent of two kids, one currently at Lowell High School and one who will hopefully be at Lowell High in the future. Um, I just, um, I don't want to repeat too much what's already been said. I'm here like many others. I think that, I hope that the school committee will vote to support, um, the request to hire a professional search firm for this new HR director. I think it's a really great opportunity, and there's just three short points I want to make about what a good opportunity this is. Um, the first point, it came to me, I was listening to, um, a podcast. Some folks may know Malcolm Gladwell, and he has this podcast called Revisionist History, and just present, um, the kind of historical context. So already it was brought up, the history of desegregating schools in our country, and during that period, and the way that we, the way it was implemented was it was a focus on the students. And unfortunately, there wasn't an effort to integrate teachers. So over ten years, over eighty-two thousand African-American teachers lost their job, fifty percent of African-American teachers across the South. And this was, you know, a systematic decision of people who make decisions for folks to lose their jobs. And so that's not here, that's not what's happening now, but it's just a really important piece of history to think about as we make these decisions. We often talk about the students, but I think tonight, so many folks have eloquently emphasized how important it is to think about our leadership, staff, and teachers. The second point is just a little bit of data, as you've already heard how important it is to have teachers and staff that look like you. Recently, a study was done with a hundred African-American students in North Carolina, and that they found having one African-American teacher between the third and fifth grade reduced the chance of an African-American boy to drop out of high school by thirty-nine percent. So that's huge. I mean, think about what we could do with this new opportunity here at Lowell High School. Um, so my third point is just that. This is a really exciting opportunity. This is about hiring someone, just as everyone said, who can start collectively building a culture that is inclusive and empowering of our broader and diverse, wonderful community. Teachers are, they have a lot of power in the lives of our children and our communities. They're gatekeepers, they're decision-makers around kids who succeed, kids who get in trouble. So I think it's really important that, um, we have a professional search firm find this new HR director. Thank you very much.
Fred Laporte.
I don't know where to begin. I'm gonna keep it short and simple. Um, I'm not gonna repeat everything, uh, everyone said. I have the same views and same concerns, but the importance of having an HR when it comes to hiring, uh, diversity, um, as somebody who's from Boston, growing up in a city that's segregated, um, based off of one's heritage, you could pinpoint exactly where somebody grew up based off of their heritage background. If you're Irish-American, more likely south of your Charlestown. If you're, if you're Caribbean or, or West Indian, you're probably gonna grow up in Matipan, et cetera. And relocating back to Lowell, where I feel is very diverse and, and know, interacting with some of the residents, and there's lack of diversity within the school system, I find it a little bit shocking. Um, as somebody who works as an educator, um, I could tell, tell you my own personal experience, you know, when it comes to microaggression, when it comes to labeling students who are special needs, these, these type of- who are special needs, these, these type of importance, um, hiring somebody who's a person of color does help or prevent future children from dwelling into these data that we encourage you to look at every day regarding about underperforming schools. I don't know what else to begin, but, um, for example, um, if the, uh, black community, uh, if, if African-Americans are 12 or 13% of the American population, why are they the bulk of specialites? So, it's more of a superiority complex. I think a lot of those educators who don't represent these students do not understand the cultural concept or how one interacts, you know? For example, again, I don't wanna generalize, but somebody who's from New Hampshire, coming into urban program, uh, urban school setting, will look at a child, like, oh, this young man or this young lady has behavior issue. Doesn't necessarily really mean that they have behavior issue. It's more along the lines of cultural difference. So, hiring somebody who, who does a better job as far as can, um, selective candidates, and, um, you know, I'm sorry, nervous here a little bit. You know, let me just digress for a second. So, hiring somebody who's a person of color, not just as an educator, but as an administrator or school police, that, that comes a long way. So, um, that's my concern, and, um, thank you, everyone, for listening.
Elise Azuga.
I'm just here for moral support, this is my daughter. Hi, my name is Elise, I'm 11 years old. When my mom asked me what I thought about more diverse schools, a more diverse school system, I thought this would be good because all students, all kids would see that they too can be a teacher, a principal, or even a superintendent one day. I asked some of my classmates because I wanted to hear different opinions of people my age. My friend Maria, who is Brazilian, said she would like it because there would be different ways of learning things. My friend Molly, who is Caucasian, says she would, she wouldn't know because she has never had a teacher who isn't Caucasian. My other friend Sarika, who is Cambodian, says she would like it because kids that speak other languages would be able to relate to, to the teachers, and if they are from the same culture, the kids would be more confident to tell the teacher, to tell the teacher why they do certain things. In my school years, I have only met one Hispanic teacher. No, wait, she was only the teacher's helper. Thank you.
Carmen Bermudez.
Buenas noches.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Carmen Bermudez, llevo 24 años aquí en Lowell.
My name is Carmen Bermudez, I've lived in Lowell for 24 years.
Y llegaba, llevo 24 años esperando este momento.
And I have waited 24 years for this moment.
Cuando llegué a este pueblo, llegué con tres niños con educación especial.
When I came to Lowell, I came with three children that have special needs.
Donde iba al programa bilingüe y nadie me hablaba español.
And I would go to the bilingual program and there would be no one that spoke my language.
Hacé mucho trabajo para que mis hijos tuvieran los servicios de educación especial.
I went through a lot of challenges to get my children to have the special needs services that they needed.
Se me hizo más fácil ir a Malden al congreso para luchar por mis hijos que ir a, que venir aquí.
It was less difficult for me to go to Malden, to Congress, to get help than to get help from Lowell.
Tuve que hacerlo a pesar de que no hablaba inglés.
I had to do so in spite of the fact that I spoke no English.
Así que en este momento hay mucha familia con estas situaciones, y tanto el cambio viene bien para ustedes como para nosotros.
That I know of families that suffered through the same circumstances that I did back then, and I believe that this change will not only help the families, but it also help the, the committee.
Recuerden que somos uno, aunque seamos de diferentes países, diferentes lenguajes, vivimos en Lowell.
Remember that we are all one, although we are from very different, um, countries, different languages, we are all from Lowell.
Y amamos a Lowell.
And we love Lowell.
Bobby Tugbaile.
Okay, um, all right, so, good evening. Uh, my name is Bobby Tugbaile, 33 Middle Street, downtown Lowell. Uh, I feel extremely humbled, uh, to be surrounded around so many impassioned, dedicated, and concerned citizens and community leaders. Uh, what's apparent from all of these faces and voices is that there's a genuine desire and sincere desire for change, a change in my personal opinion that is far overdue. Over the past few months, I've had the opportunity to review various workforce and staffing reports. I've also had the opportunity to speak to current Lowell Public School administrators and students. Uh, with respect to data derived from, uh, 2017, 2018, uh, LPS workforce report, between May and August of 2017, three months, 25 new administrators were hired, hired. Out of those 25, two of those hires were African-American, and 23 were Caucasian. In that same report, it displayed a quite robust substitute and paraprofessional talent pool and workforce development program efforts being made at multiple levels to ensure, uh, that we're utilizing this diverse, uh, pool, uh, to source talent for diversity recruitment efforts. Roughly 25% of teachers resided in Lowell, still on this report. Roughly 25% of administrators resided in Lowell. Roughly 70% of paraprofessionals resided in Lowell. The report also listed eight recruitment fairs in 2017, six of which only happened in the Merrimack Valley. One in Fitchburg, one in Boston. Having highlighted some of this data, I'd like to approach this particular matter of diversity, inclusion, and equal opportunity from a different perspective. I've been in the recruitment and HR space for almost 13 years. I've worked both in corporate and nonprofit in Boston and here in the Merrimack Valley. What I can say about recruitment is that it's very, very hard work, you know? What I can say about the human resources function is that it does not always get the attention, support, respect, and funding it deserves. Many organizations view human resources as a cost center, paper pushers, I've heard, and unfortunately, does not allow it to do its due diligence. The HR function has rapidly evolved over the past 10 years, and high-performing organizations rely on HR not just for benefit fares and processing leave of absence claims. They look to HR to be thought leaders on recruitment, retention, organizational development, and risk management. All of these are sub-specialties within the HR function, and high-performing organizations recognize that you have to have the right staffing and resources in each of those areas to fully maximize an organization's human capital to carry out its mission. I believe that recruiting in Lowell Public School works. It has done a fantastic job in recruiting quality educators and administrators in the service of its students, families, and the community at large. It's working, but if I had to be honest, however, based on the data, recruitment at Lowell Public Schools has worked extremely well if you're Caucasian. More especially if you are a white woman from a staffing perspective. More especially if you are a white male from a salary perspective. There is inequity, it seems, at many levels within Lowell Public School system, and a qualified, dynamic, experienced, and supported HR executive can be invaluable in creating fair and equitable processes that support both the hiring of quality and diversity. Both are not mutually exclusive. Unfortunately, we're still having debates in 2018 around ensuring and cultivating a diverse workforce and not giving unqualified minorities a leg up. Anyway, there are factors, though, that are uncontrollable and do impact the ability to overall attract talent, talk less of diversity-focused recruitment. Nationally, teaching is not a attractive profession as it once was, low unemployment rates, high competition for talent impacting recruiting. The ability to attract talent to Lowell will be severely impacted when we have neighboring communities like Boston, Cambridge, Westford, Chelmsford, that also have aggressive recruiting plans. A male Spanish-speaking educator with a master's is a commodity. Lowell wants someone like that, but so does everyone else. So now, we have come to a point where we all know we want diversity, but what are we gonna do? What are we gonna do? Are we gonna do what is necessary to compete? Are we gonna do?
You're, you're making some good points, but could you sell?
10 more seconds, thank you. Are we going to do what is critical to have a diverse workforce that is truly representative of the community? To ensure that our young people acquire the full value of their education? So that our young people will never have to say, "I've never had a male teacher." All we know about African-American history is slavery and Martin Luther King Jr., where are all the Southeast Asian and Hispanic educators in Lowell? In closing, our system works, but it, just because it works, doesn't mean it can't be improved. It does not mean we cannot be innovative. Here's an opportunity, let's be brave, let's be bold, and let's show Massachusetts that Lowell can be a leader. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes our speaking program. I've asked Sophia, uh, we had a meeting on safety at the high school about a week ago, but a lot of students did talk about this issue. Could you just give a quick highlight?
Yeah, when we talked about this issue at the high school, so many students didn't feel like they were represented, especially in the security aspect of the high school, which is a totally different issue from the teaching aspect. But I think what it comes down to is, we have one of the most diverse populations in the state, and our student body is being told what to do by white people. We've already touched on, "You can't be what you can't see," but I'm gonna read a quick quote from "The Cellot" by Paul Beatty. Um, "My hands cuffed and crossed behind my back, my right to remain silent long since waived and said goodbye to, as I sit in a thickly padded chair that, much like this country, isn't quite as comfortable as it looks." Um, and the part that says, "Much like this country isn't as comfortable as it looks," I think attests to the Lowell Public School system and what we've done with the lack of diversity in hiring. So many students don't feel represented. I mean, we understand that to get the perspective that we need with such a diverse student body, with people coming from all over the world and coming together in this amazing school system, we are doing an okay job of celebrating it, but we're not doing a good job of representing it, and we need this diverse hiring to close the gaps and give students the value of their education that we can give them. It, this is a really big issue, and if something isn't done soon, something needs to be done soon. That's all I'm gonna say. Thank you.
Thank you. Up on the floor, any discussion from the floor?
Yeah, I wanna speak, no doubt. This is an issue that's got me in a lot of trouble in the past, past year and a half to two years. I've been boycotted, I've been slandered, and, um, I just wanna give you a little bit of a background, and I need it. I come from Housing Projects as a kid, Shaughnessy Terrace. Lost my mother at nine and a half years old. And, um, I know I worked in a prison system that we spend $50,000 to $100,000 a year on inmates. You never hear anybody complain. We spend $13,500 bucks on a child, and that's all you hear them complain. This issue right here to me is probably the biggest issue the Lowell School Department's facing, Bill, uh, Mayor. That's how I feel. Uh, HR has had a problem for the past four to six years, even though I felt the last HR person has done almost everything these people wanted, except finding more diverse candidates to be teachers. Uh, I thought she'd done a wonderful job. I don't think the superintendent sees everything that goes on. He's got a lot to do, and some of his underlings probably, to me, uh, kinda destroyed a good HR office. And again, that's my opinion. But I wanted to touch affirmative action, uh, just so people can understand where I come from. Uh, 1974, I never worked harder in my life to become an infantryman in the US Army, and I got the highest award you could get during peacetime. It was called an expert infantry badge. I went up for the rank of sergeant, and they looked me right in the eye, and they said, "You deserve to be a sergeant, but we can't make you a sergeant because you're white." I'll never forget it. It's called affirmative action, and it's in the Supreme Court. I don't think it's come out of there yet. And all I'm trying to say is, I believe in diversity. I believe in fixing this HR once and for all. I think, uh, Dominic's motion comes into play here, and I'm glad he's fighting for more diversity. But I really do feel that we have to look at it as a whole. Meaning, my grandson and my children, I want them looked at the same way every other child's looked at. That's all I'm looking for, fairness across the board. Affirmative action has been around for 40 years, and it's affected a lot of people that should've got hired, and because they're white, they can't get the job. That's wrong also. And I am for diversity, and I'm gonna support this motion, and I believe, Mr. Superintendent, uh, our high school is 1/3. I think the largest population in our high school is Hispanic. The second is, uh, tied for Caucasians or whites and Asians, and then our black population's only around 8%. I'm pretty sure I'm close on all those numbers. So, my point is, I wanna see more Southeast Asians. I wanna see more Puerto Ricans. But our HR office last year sent some people down to New Orleans, and I'm not saying anything negative here, but we went down there looking for more black teachers. And that's fine, too. I want blacks, cuz we got people, the 8% are from Africa. And I'm almost done, but my point is, we have, this is the biggest issue in my career, and I, I hope you fix it. Find someone that does not live in this area, because there's 31 to 3200 jobs that come with a pension, and that's the problem. Thank you very much.
Ms., uh, Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I, I really just wanna, um, thank the many members of the public who came down to speak tonight. Um, you know, to steal a movie quote, "You had me at hello." So, I appreciate the, the, um, all the points that you had brought up. What I'm really hoping from this is that, cuz I think the real reality is that we don't know what works. I mean, we, as a, as a school committee, I will say for myself, you know, in terms of hiring that I do, it's something that I would love to be able to bring someone into this position who could really bring the ideas that will make this a reality for us. Cuz we have, you know, again, I've been on this committee for a long time. We've had this, this conversation for, you know, we're in the 19th year of it that I've been involved, um, and it certainly goes even further back than that. So, you know, I'm certainly supporting this, um, this motion, uh, and I really am hoping that we can use the opportunity to get a real, um, creative thinker and someone who really has a, a legitimate background in being successful in these kind of diversity hiring efforts. Um, I have a lot of kind of friends and family who work in the HR space, and one of the comments I think that was made that, as I've been having these conversations, was really driven home for me was, you know, the idea of getting a more diverse work, workforce in place is only step one. The idea of retaining and supporting and really getting the most out of that, that diverse workforce, is the long-term project that has to be part of the, the kind of cultural awareness and, and the, the, the environment that we wanna build in all of our schools, all of our, all of our public spaces, truth be told. So, again, uh, looking forward to, to this process and hoping that we can really come out of it with an inspired, uh, inspired choice for ourselves and for our city. Thank you.
Sophia?
Um, I just wanna start out by saying that I know you just said that this is the 19th year we've been having this conversation. That is far too long. I, my heart actually hurts that that is how long it's been. Um, we know what works is when our students feel represented and they feel safe in their classrooms, and they feel like they can approach their teacher. and they feel like they can approach their teacher, and they can relate to their teacher, and any administrator in this room. And our administration does not have the representation it needs. My mind is blown that we think this is okay, and white privilege has crept its way into this administration and every single administration in the United States, and our students can't be what they can't see. I'm just going to say that. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Could I just, just to be clear, I'm supporting the motion? I just wanted to-
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. Just had a, a comment and then some questions. My comment is, I think we've been talking about this. I know this committee and in the prior committee for two years, really putting it as a focus, as one of the superintendent's, like, top goals. And, you know, I frankly was very disappointed in what we saw in terms of our principal hiring. You know, we had a number of nine or ten new positions or moved-in positions, people transferred around, and they were all, not one was a person of color. And, and so I think that we absolutely have to do better. My question with this particular role, I, I think it's an essential core position for a lot of the reasons that have been discussed. I have that same sense of urgency with this opportunity. While I appreciate that we have an interim who's available to stay on, and I, I think that training piece will be helpful, what is the timeline? Have we posted a position? I know you mentioned in your report that you would be looking at outside search agencies. Can you give us some idea of what the timeline is, when we're going to be actually moving on this?
We put the word out to, to various HR search firms, and we're waiting for responses for them, from them, on what it would take and what is their process. We will be asking them to also do presentation to, to us, which I'm sure we would look at the three finalists or firm, whatever, if we have more than three, to even hopefully come and present here to the public, to see where they traditionally would come out and give you their process, because it's not just about their quote of how much they would take, but their process, how they go about doing it, and their record as well. You want to look at their, what did they do in the past and, and how they got to recruit their, their officers. So that's, that's the part that we're initiating right now.
Okay. Mr. Superintendent, this is not a form of emotion, but at this point, I mean, from my own belief system, I mean, we've, this has been an issue for a long, long time, since I can remember being in the school syst, in the school system. But do you think it's possible for you to contact some people at the State Department of Education to possibly get someone, they do have contact with experts in this area, maybe they could make a presentation at some point to the school committee to talk about how to think out of the box, not only in our hiring, but our own procedures that might in some way support an attitude where people would want, people of color would want to come to the school system. There's, that's also something that has to be. I mean, you have to want to do something. I mean, because there are so many communities that are willing to pay higher, pay more money, offer more training, things like that. So I, I think if you could just find out if there's some information out there that could be brought to this entire board, and we could figure a way to come together and sort of have a, a discussion, because this is a real issue and should be discussed. If that's okay with you.
Thank you, we will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is the Lowell High School Building Committee meeting update. Thank, I want to thank all the speakers first. Thank you very much. Mr. Superintendent?
I can start it out, and then if I forget something, you can tell me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said earlier, we met with the Lowell High School Project Team, the, the School Building Committee, and they, there was a, a whole presentation, which we, we included the, the PDF file on that, and they presented various options and, and some of the things that were required by MSBA. They also presented a timeline of things, and I think we're meeting next on that April 30, and we'll have more details, and we'll, we'll keep you informed. Most of the information that is given is also posted on their website, on the website, the city website. When you follow it up and you follow the high school project, you'll find all that information. If you have any comments you would like to channel through us, Ms. Martin is your representative, we're also there, so you can do it either way, either give it to Ms. Martin or ourselves.
I'd only add, you know, it was certainly a very informative meeting, and I would definitely encourage both the members of the committee and the general public to, to check out the, the high school building button on the, the City of Lowell site. You know, there are three options, they were all downtown options at this point. I think of the three, certainly the, the building committee was least excited about the all-new construction downtown. That was one that kind of required, that required about twenty-four different portables. It was a very complicated process, and it would leave the, what we always call the old building, really untouched and not part of the, the high school campus anymore. So the other two options were, were certainly more, received a warmer reception from, from the building committee, but certainly no votes have been taken, and we will be on, on April 30th taking the next steps. I think the next key date that we're looking at is that the city really is ambitious and trying to get us in front of the MSBA for their June meeting. I am hopeful that we will be able to, to have that final decision and have enough information in for, to be part of that process. That would give us an August decision. So again, there is a great deal of information, including the movement towards eminent domain takings, that is still being discussed and still being, going through the process, the legal process, but steps are being taken to move forward. And again, I would recommend, there's a lot of really very in-depth and interesting information that's provided by the city.
And you know, April 26th, we should have the cost of those buildings, so I will try to make sure that as soon as we get the cost of the buildings and the blueprint, so to speak, that, that all the members of the committee receive that, because it's going to be important.
Thank you. I just had a question. Is the April 30 meeting, is that the community meeting?
Yes.
So that would be a good opportunity-
I thought that was the building committee. I may have the dates right. The dates wrong.
The first is the building committee, I believe.
Okay.
But, but it is a-
Then there's a community meeting.
I mean, I think that would be a really good opportunity.
It's interchangeable. We'll, we're going to look at what information, when we get the information, what's best.
But, I mean, that's just a date that sticks in my mind, I'm not sure, but if that is the community meeting, it would be great, you know, for people to come out, or it's going to be televised, watch it on TV, because then you get to see, you know, have questions answered right there by the team, so that would be an important meeting.
Yeah. But it's important that this committee get the prices and want it. Mr. Dakota, do you have a question? Do you have a question, sir?
Yeah, in reference to that, I had written down on my calendar because of, again, of announcements that, that School Building Committee is meeting at 6:30 in the council chamber on Monday, the 30th.
And that is a community meeting?
Well, I, I'm assuming it's open to the public.
All, all the meetings are open to the public, but the April 30th was anticipated, well, there's the possibility of a meeting on the 27th or the 26th for the committee. We're looking at maybe adding more. I mean, that's, we should get at least several meetings out to the community. But the meeting of this committee could be on the 30th, or it could be on the same day as the city council receives the information for the vote. So, either way, but we'll have a couple of other meetings before that.
And provide cards.
It'll be interesting. Any other, any other questions?
I just submit that as a report of progress.
Okay, thank you. Monthly financial report. Second? Oh, oh, you want the motion, okay. Well, yeah, yeah. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just going to turn it over to Mr. Gary Frisch.
This is a budget report we prepare monthly. The date of this report is March 29, 2018. The original budget was one hundred and sixty-two million. We received two hundred and fifty thousand from the state, from the city in January, which brought the total budget to one hundred and sixty-two million, three twenty-three. In addition to that is carryover from the prior fiscal year, and those are purchase orders that were issued prior to June 30th but weren't completed. And so they are just carried over into the next fiscal year. So the adjusted total is one hundred and sixty-three million, one twenty-seven. Year-to-date expenditures, we've expended one hundred and one million dollars, and we have outstanding purchase orders of seven million dollars, which leaves a remaining balance, remaining budget available of fifty-four million dollars at this time. On the second page, we highlight the revolving funds, and two of the major revolving funds that I'd like to highlight are the SPECT Circuit Breaker, seven hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars, and then we're also waiting two more quarterly payments of additional eight hundred thousand dollars each. The Milkkin Lunch Fund is at six hundred and eighty-eight thousand. We just had a reimbursement for part of the total reimbursement for the budget year of about eight hundred thousand. So that brought down our previous balance of two-point-eight million at February 11th. And some other expenditures to the Aramark program, as well as payroll, which brought it down to six hundred and eighty-eight thousand as of March 29th. Then there's the detailed monthly budget report, and at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Question? No?
Again, I'm just trying to figure out how, how this works. So do we have, are we projecting any major spending i- in the, the last quarter, the last three months of this year? Are we, are we buying anything new? Are we, are we projecting? I mean, if you, if, there's a reason I'm asking.
Yeah, it's mainly salaries that are, we've expended most of our supplies and equipment, and we're down to salaries.
The, the, my question is, because if you look at the total amount between year-to-date expenditures and outstanding purchase orders, that roughly comes to about a hundred and eight million, eight hundred and some odd dollars.
Correct.
Okay. Which means, on average, we're spending twelve million and ninety-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars a month. Based on having fifty-four left over, our monthly, we're going to have a, it's projected according to this, that we're only going to spend another thirty-seven million dollars, which doesn't seem possible to me that, I mean, and, and then it also, if we add another, I mean, if we add another four and a half million dollars to our monthly average, we're still going to end up with some excess. And if, if, if we can justify, if we can show that we do end up with this excess, then we should be able to talk to the city manager and the city council and see if there's a way, if we're giving them, you know, and again, I even went to, if, if we added five million dollars more a month to what our average is, and our average, again, is twelve million dollars, even if we went up to seventeen million for the final three months, we would still have two-point-nine million dollars remaining in the budget. And if that's the case, we could work something out. So is there a way that we can get a better explanation of, you know, I know we have teachers who are paid, you know, who extend over the fifty-two weeks as opposed to taking the, what is it, forty-six or?
Forty-two or fifty-two.
Fifty-two, right.
And most of the teachers are taking fifty-two weeks, so-
I know in June, we have an extra, almost like an extra payroll. So if we could just get a little explanation for the next month of what we're projecting, because if there's a way that we're, you know, we're fortunate enough through the way that you've run this budget this year, that we could have, you know, I, I mean, it just, it, it blows my mind that we're, we're averaging twelve million dollars and to get to fifty-four would be spending, you know, would be spending almost eighteen million dollars a month, which is six million dollars more than what our monthly expenditures, and why in the last three months, they would go up six million dollars a month is, and again, I'm just trying to, there could be a perfectly legitimate explanation.
Yeah. We will provide you with that explanation. We will provide you with the, with the, on the next meeting, we will provide you with what is expected to be paid in, in coming up.
Thank you.
And we'll have the details. Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm looking at the, the school committee funds that we have, and just want to make sure, do we have the money in our school committee fund account for all of us to go to the MASC Day on the Hill in Boston on April 26th? Or is it the 25th? The 25th? Because I would encourage my colleagues, if you can go, but that's a legitimate question to you, through you, to Mr. Frisch. What, what account would that come out of? I, I don't know if it would be membership or-
We do have some funds that we can transfer within the school committee function. So we can make a budget transfer from the school, community, or school committee subscription into, yeah, probably come out of either membership or subscription. We'll see where it was paid from last year.
Right, because I know we do pay to be members of the Mass Association of School Committees. We are looking at a very tight budget year. I think it behooves us all to get as much information as we can from the state, what we can be counting on in terms of support, how we can advocate for more support, and then, since I'm talking about this, I would also remind the mayor, you had discussed at our last meeting, having some kind of a joint-
Yes.
-meeting with the city council. I'd rather see that happen sooner than later, so that we can start to impress upon them, you know, what the city's commitment should be to the schools and what that means for us. Thank you, for our children.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Doherty will, will do is, will do exactly what Mr. Nutter has asked. We'll, we'll have a specifics for the school committee, all the school committee accounts. We have a few of them. We'll have a forecast for you after all is paid, what would be the available balance, because I don't think any year you spend the money, all of it, to be honest. So we can show you that, and then we'll also show you what would be the cost of an attendance by one school committee member, and then you can see from there how many of you can go. And I do agree with you, I encourage everybody to attend, because it's very, very informational.
And it's minimal cost. It's in Boston. It's just getting the time off from work. I think that's the challenge for some of us. Thank you.
All set in that area? Okay, quotes for Human Resource Audit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is in response to the motion by Ms. Martin. We did send out three quotes, as the report says, and, right, they all promised us, hopefully quotes, by Monday or Tuesday. None of them has come in. We called them up again. The, the HR director, the acting HR, Human Resource Director, called them. They're promising, all of them, to get the, the quotes before Friday. In the meantime, we did get some, another, a fourth one referred to us by Ms. Martin, and we will send them as well, since we didn't get yet quotes from those, so we'll send a fourth one, so hopefully we'll have four as soon as we can. If I get them before, we'll, we'll circulate them as well.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you, thank you very much, and certainly looking forward to seeing what the, what comes back to us in terms of a response to our Scope of Services request. I only wanted to make one, one clarification. We do have in here the, looking at the different items, and I know we discussed wanting to talk about organizational changes and, and some of the, those other components that we want to ensure are part of this. I just want to make sure that the, that second to last bullet, the review compliance, I, I'm far more interested in an audit of compliance as opposed to a review, so I just want to make sure we're clear that what I'm looking for really is to have, you know, have these experts go through our files, be able to make any corrections, be able to show us their findings. I think a lot of them will probably lead to recommendations, to changes for process and- and changes for different ways that we do things, but I just didn't wanna leave it that, you know, that someone would just come in and do a, you know, a, a review of ten files. I, I really want this to be an audit where we have solid information moving forward. Thanks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Martin, we owe you an apology. This has been updated after they gave it to me as a review. Unfortunately, this page went to you, as is without the edit. I just noticed that. The edit is under objectives of consultation. There was a second point that was added and sent to all three that exactly repeats the second bullet point, but instead of review is to ensure compliance.
Perfectly happy with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess, you know, I wasn't the maker of this motion. I fully supported it at the time. I still support it. My concern, when I look at the scope, is it sounds like we're gonna be asking for so much stuff that it could get very expensive, and I think that I, I am in agreement with my colleague, the compliance piece with, to me, it is the second to, or, so this is the Scope of Services page on our packet. It's the second-to-last bullet on the purpose of the consultation. This is really the core of what we're looking for, review compliance with Mass general laws and Lowell Public School policies. And, you know, I know I've been up here and, you know, repeatedly having concerns about our screening process, for instance, that we have a policy in place, and are we following that policy? That when a screening committee of community members gets together and they spend a certain amount of time reviewing applicants and they put forward a number, that those applicants do move through the process. So I love the idea of having this third party come in and make sure that we're in compliance with the HR laws in the state, and make sure that we're following, you know, the spirit and the letter of our policies in terms of having community involvement in hiring. So to me, if we, you know, when we get these RFPs or whatever you call, when it's gonna be a contract that we sign, if we have too much on there about review and what technology should we be buying, we're gonna be biting off more than we can afford. That the real core, and I, and I apologize, Ms. Martin, if this is not what your intention is, to me, it is the review compliance with, you know, Mass laws and with our policies. That is the core of it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hordy, when, when Ms. Martin brought on her motion, I had mentioned that, if you recall during my report last year, I had asked that one of the things that we need to do is a review of HR, because you, you might be interested in compliance, and that's great, that's your role as a school committee. My role as a CEO is to look for efficiencies and how do we do better things? We are not experts in HR. We've just been talking about that earlier. So to me, it's extremely important, it's even more important than anything else to be able to find experts to help us with how do we make, how do we achieve efficiencies, and that would help us not only to, to be in compliance, but to help us also to avoid costly errors between payroll, between, because right now we live with systems that don't talk to each other, between the city system or that. So I, I want to stress, as, as much as I agree with you, that the compliance is, is extremely important, and, and in, in your role as a school committee, that, that has to be on your top priority, and I, and I respect that. But I also, in my top priority, is, is I get paid to, to try to find, to do a good job, and if we find where we're not doing a good job, how do we come to do, how do we do, to go about doing a good job? So I think, rather than try to eliminate anything now, let's wait for the proposals. Let's see how much they're gonna, what we're getting as a deal, and then we can, we can obviously, we can't buy what we can't afford, right? So we will have to, to negotiate and see if there is a need to eliminate something or delay it in the process for another fiscal year. We'll look into that.
Any other questions? Thank you. Lowell Public School early release, Good Friday?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me just get it. Okay, I can speak to that. Yes, we did, we did look at that motion, and we continue to look at it, but we wanted to respond first to this motion while we are responding, but yet continuing to look at it. But we wanted to bring to your attention that in the latest contract that we, we have settled with both of, with, with our two largest unions, UTL and LSAA, there was a clause where, in, in order to be fair to all religions, we allowed three days, up to three days for religious. So one of the biggest issue that we face is that if, if, if a holiday is, is not, is a major holiday, our largest group is the Christian group. If we do not have it as a holiday, the fear is that if you eliminate the Good Friday as a holiday, you still cannot legally prevent any one of the employees not to take it as a holiday because of those contracts. So you could have teachers, administrators calling in and say, "Thank you, I'm, I'm off for my religious holiday. I'll see you later." And that point, you put us in an incredibly impossible position to bring in enough subs to ensure the safety of the kids, let alone their learning. So I think we, we will continue to look at it. It's, it's always a good idea to look at various options. I think the option that was presented last time, the suggestion that was presented last time, to do a survey, we have already requested from UTL, if they could be kind enough to do a survey. But I would, I would, I would suggest that even if we do get a survey, we have to proceed with this with caution, because if they wanna take, until we get to a point where we could renegotiate this contract, if any employee, we have now, this week we have several, several requests for the, for the Orthodox faith, where they're taking Good Friday. We can't deny that as per the contract. But when you have a small group, you can have enough substitute, but when you have a large group, our, the largest faith that we have in our employees is Christianity. Currently, the way the contracts are, until we get to recommend them to, to, to renegotiate this contract, we will, our administration is not recommending to, to do any change in the Good Friday as of yet.
Further discussion? Okay. Next, purchasing equipment delays?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. The, what the, the motion from Mr. Nutter refers to is, is to, goes back to about a year ago, I had requested from our video, audiovisual department to see how we can equip all of our middle schools, to have sufficient equipment so that our middle schools can, can publicize all the great events that they have. I toured every middle school myself, I attended many of their events. They do not have adequate equipment at all. Last week I was talking to the city manager then, he attested to that himself, having, having put his kids through the system. So he knows that, that, that is true, and he visited, and he knows about that. So we had put at the time, we Comcast, when Comcast has a pass-through cost of five percent on, on every bill in Lowell, and that five percent is what we refer to as the PEG money. PEG stands for Public Education and Government. Public and, and government is really LTC, and education is the schools. And traditionally, what happens is an amount of money is designated for the schools, and it would reside in a, in a revolving account. And there will be usually two kinds of revol, of accounts. One for operations, and that's the account where we pay from the people who work in our audiovisual, for instance, you know, like the people at the, at the high school that work with audiovisual. And we also have another account that would pay for equipment. So we had asked the city then to give us the numbers, because they hold the accounts, not us, and to tell us how much money we have available to pay for these, and we went on and searched in our end what it would cost to do. Initially, at least the sound system, because we knew that if you tried to do everything at once, it's gonna be very expensive. So we said at least the sound system, and it's usually around eight to nine thousand only per school, so it's not really something prohibitive, and to try to equip everybody with the sound, adequate at sound system. And things went on delayed, and, and because, partly because the state was changing the rules on how you account for this money. The state has changed the rules since, which monies are no longer allowed to be kept in specific revolving accounts, but instead they're kept all into one account with the city, and every expenditure has to be then, you know, authorized by the, the city manager, and then an appropriation is put through the city council to fund it. And so we are trying to work with them on that. Last week, we had a, we had a discussion with the city council manager and his folks to talk, because there was a previous to my arrival, apparently, they had a, an agreement to purchase a truck and fund the, the, the equipment, the mobile equipment within that truck as well. And I wasn't aware of that, because there was no documentation of that at all, and so the city had asked us, is can we, are we ready to spend that amount? And I, I had said, "Well, what I know, what, like, what we would like to spend is really equip the middle schools." So they were gonna look at the funds that, and I said, "If you have enough sufficient funds between the city and the school in that Comcast account to fund both, that's great. That would be wonderful." And so they asked us to send them all the POs. We have sent them all the POs of the middle schools that still need to be equipped. There are seven of them. It's, the bills are between eight to nine thousand, so you can do the math there. And I, I, I know that yesterday there was a motion on the city side to fund that truck for, the appropriation for that, so I'm hopefully assuming that they did find enough funding, so that's why they decided to fund both the truck and, and the middle schools, and that's good news for us. So, but we did send them everything, and we're waiting for the new city manager, I guess, to come in, and hopefully we'll put an appropriation to the city council to fund that as well.
Mr. Nutter?
Just to clarify some points that the superintendent made. The change in the law came when the state enacted the Municipal Modernization Act, because they found that some communities, it was a bunch of changes to try to tighten up the fiscal. Lowell High School has the Colleen Kriegen Television Studio that was just redone a few years ago, and I believe at that time there was an agreement made that the mobile van that the high school, that's always parked down at Lowell High, would be equipped and updated to go along with the studio. Unfortunately, they did not have enough money to do that at that time, and then they just changed the law, so that's why it was voted last night, that van will be updated and equipped to go along with the studio, will be able to broadcast from all over the city. The city will also use it to broadcast, like the Folk Festival, the Winter Fest, and things like that, but will also be able to use it for, you know, the, the school. But now, everything has to go through the city council, and so hopefully they'll, you know, they'll vote to give us some of that Comcast money.
Superintendent?
Yeah, if I may add just one more thing, the two projects actually complement each other really well, because the, the part that we're looking for is the sound systems within the school, and you really need to have that to hold a decent event. And if you have a, a mobile truck that can come and broadcast it through the city, that's just great. You know, that would be a, a really good complement.
Okay. I'll set that issue. Mr. Dakota?
I believe I saw some of that new equipment at the Wang when I went to the performance of Aladdin, which was outstanding at the Wang last week. They did a great job. The kids were fabulous. And Jack Parnard was there with some of this, that brand-new equipment, and he was telling us what, what some of it was, and it was really nice to see that. Thank you.
All set. All right. Combined subcommittee meetings. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did follow up with that with the legal counsel, and he did his research, and after consulting with them, I think we believe that this motion has merit, and consequently, we recommend that any combined subcommittee meeting is called in which four or more members are attending, that the meeting should be posted as a meeting of the committee as a whole. Obviously, that we can manage that is not a problem.
Okay. Lowell High School elective classes?
Again, this is in response to a motion from Mr. Lay. The school committee had voted on to support that motion, and so consequently, what we did is send a directive to the high school. I, I notified the head of school that all elective high classes must have a minimum of ten students before they can be scheduled. Not to say that exceptions cannot occur, the motion has that, allows for exceptions, but they need to be approved by the superintendent's office. I can understand why sometimes they have to, they need to do that.
Further discussion? Okay. Thank you. Enrollment figures? Oh, I'm sorry, quarterly reports and motions?
Okay. On the quarterly reports and motions, I guess the name of quarterly is gonna disappear, because the motion last time, we actually removed it on the report, but we need to remove it on the agenda as well, because last time the motion was amended to accept to, that we, this report becomes a report of every meeting, to be updated. And we, this is the latest one we have given you. We tried to estimate as, as closest as possible to the dates and that we can think of, the, what you see. The team has reviewed each one, each of the assistant superintendent reviewed their section, and if you see anything you'd like to ask questions about or anything like that, please let us know, and we'll try to keep this one updated for you for every meeting.
Mr. Hordy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through you to the superintendent. So there's really just two motions I wanted to bring up tonight. The first one is number nine. That was my motion that was originally made in March of two thousand and seventeen, so that was over a year ago, looking for the information to be on our website regarding our school site councils, when they meet, the minutes of those meetings, and the members. You know, as we all know, that is a state-mandated advisory group that's supposed to be happening at every school. So I'm just, you know, I made the motion again in January, because it had been reported out that it was happening, and it wasn't on the website. I didn't go through every school for tonight's meeting, I just popped in on a few, and it, it still isn't there, and as you say, in your status, it's ongoing. So I guess my question is, why isn't it done?
Sure.
And if there are, if you wanna give us a report on the schools that don't have it?
No, let's avoid reports here. We're very busy with, with.
Because this is, it's state-mandated that we're holding. And, and we, if I could just finish, we know Mr. Lay had a motion earlier tonight. It's been an ongoing effort with this committee to get more parent engagement, more parent involvement. These school site councils are absolutely a way to do that. Publicizing it on the website is absolutely a way to do that, so it is important, but thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hordy. First of all, I just wanna clarify one point, because you said something which I believe would leave a misunderstanding in the community, when you said it, it was said earlier that it was done, but it wasn't done. I think it was a matter of misunderstanding, because the earlier time when we talked about this, was to post the school councils on, on each site, and that was what was referred by "it was done." Right now, the motion speaks to further details, to have the minutes, the agendas, and so forth of these. So that is not being done, that has not been done yet.
Was my original motion, was to have them, the whole package.
But what we're talking about, what was, what we reported as what was done. That's what I'm talking about. So right now, in answering, why is it ongoing? As if you recall back, and I think it was about two budgets ago or one budget ago, I don't remember, we did not, we had to eliminate, because of budget needs, all the individual allowances for each school, for website, and we moved everything too centrally to one website. And these, the webs, the web manager at this point has sent numerous times, numerous times, requests to all the school principals and school administration to please supply us with the information that is needed, so we will do the posting for them. They don't even have to do the postings, and we do not get the responses for, does not, there's still a lot to be, to be desired in terms of getting that information and putting it. The reason why it's ongoing is if we don't have the information, we can't create it. We can't possibly send that person, or send a person to attend every school committee, school council, and then have them report and do the agenda, so we can't really do that, so we rely. It's a new thing for the schools, and we, you know, new, new requirement for them to supply us with this information, and I think it's gonna take some time before they can really get into and develop a system by which they can do that. We're just trying to be very patient with them and, and, and helping them in any way we can, so that's why the effort is still ongoing. The reason that it hasn't, it's need, it's not being done, because we don't have people to just send out and go do it ourselves. We have to rely on them contributing the information.
I, I appreciate that comment. I would kind of respond with, getting parents involved starts at the principal level of every school. every school, and it starts with you at the head of these principals, they report to you. So if you can impress upon them that this is important, it's part of one of our pillars, community engagement, parent involvement, we should be able to get this information. It's not, as I said, it's a state-required advisory council, they should be able to provide, you know, and I think that being patient of over a year, I'm not feeling that patient anymore. I have this, you know, we have motions about the importance of parent involvement, so we need to make that, have an urgency, that if you could relay to your team of principals that this is important, I think maybe we could move a little quicker.
I am meeting my team eight o'clock tomorrow morning, we have a meeting with all principals, I will certainly relay that.
Thank you so much, I would really appreciate it. So my other comment, while I, about the quarterly motions, I had motion number 12, and that was regarding the day school plans, and I guess I'm concerned with the timeline, because I don't want to be in the thick of the budget process when we're talking about this. I know that we, from the update I got last time from your team, that there was a request for proposals, and I believe it was supposed to be due today, that they were going to be opened. And I just, I want to just get a sense of what we're thinking before we get in the thick of the budget. And again, this goes from past experience, I believe it was last June when this committee first found out we weren't going to have a day school in Lowell, it was going to be in Methuen. I'm just trying to get ahead of it, and so I was hoping that we could get an update before April 26. And I know you might not have everything by then, but you'll know more than you know, than you'll know the last time you reported to us on it.
Are we talking about the day school or the Cardinal?
The day school. We had requests for proposals on options.
On the day school, they opened the bids today, and they have two bids, and they just informed us this afternoon that we have to go rate these two, so just notified us this afternoon. So I think this week, tomorrow, or by tomorrow, by Friday maximum, we will have the team from Special Education as well as Finance, they're going to go there and rate, and then report immediately back to the city which one is the preferred site, and then we will be able to, we can notify.
And I'm not saying we have to have it tomorrow, what I'm saying is I don't want to wait till April 26. You've put under status, it's going to be part of the proposed budget on April 26.
No, I, that was to the whole thing, including the Cardinal, because you have in your motion the issue of the Cardinal about finding a alternative solution.
Some options, right, okay. So I just would like to get an update prior to the thick of the budget. All right, thank you. Do you want us to be taking them off, so we can limit?
Well, anything that is in pink, usually, what, in the old system, what you did is you voted quarterly to accept this, and then Minerva will take care of the rest.
So anything that's, all right, so when we do the motion to, all the completed ones will go off?
They'll go away.
That would make sense, thank you.
All set. Enrollment figures?
And then the new ones will be added.
Okay. Enrollment figures? Any report on that?
I just had a quick question on, looking at the changes over time, do we have any sense of kind of, there seem to be certain weeks, I mean, some I think are understandable, like January, we see a big, you know, a reduction of 25. I don't find that shocking. Some of these in like February and March, though, are some really large numbers, and I was just curious if we have any kind of, even if it's anecdotal, some kind of information about why these things are clustering the way they are? I mean, getting data is extremely helpful, but it does, of course, raise questions that, is there some historic model that this is kind of following, or is there something that happened in, you know, February or, let's see, March 6th, that sent 77 kids out of our district? That would be great, I think that would be helpful information for the committee to have.
We can ask Ms. Do that to put together some.
It doesn't need to be intense, so I'm just looking for some basic information that could give us some insights.
All set, okay. Yes, Mr. Superintendent?
If I may, there was one item I keep forgetting. I meant to do it in the previous school committee, but we keep always forgetting it. The first motion on this report, if I may go back to it, it's a, it's an impossible motion that was put together by two committees ago, not just one. It's a motion that requests us to look at all the mandates that have been adopted by DESI and see if they're still required in the new federal guidelines. I need to hire a team of 10 people to do that. If you're ready to finance it, I'm happy to do it, but can I please request?
A motion to delete that?
To vacate this motion, please.
I would make a motion to vacate that motion.
Second. Okay. Motion made, seconded.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I need a motion to accept the reports of the superintendent from 9-1 through 9-10 as a report of progress. By, I need, Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Okay, need a motion to approve the vote of the inter-district school choice program. Policy change. You know what? We did.
We did.
Sorry about that, I was the one that brought it up, thank you. Okay. Notice the time? Okay, vote of policy revisions. City council will be out by now. Motion to approve equal educational opportunities policy. By, I need a second?
I would make that motion. This is the first review of a policy change, is that right?
Ms. Durkin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is, this does not change the content of the actual policy, but more about the protected categories that we haven't updated our policies, and we are starting, so what will be happening over the course of several months? We are going through each of these policies in our manuals, and we are trying to make sure that we, we follow the letter of the law, and we also, not only follow the letter of the law, educate our staff around this, so that if, if you feel that you need a second read of this, certainly, we can put this on the agenda for the next, but you will see very similar language that will be brought forward to you on the motions. So for example, pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions just was a bill that was passed April 1st, and so that we need to make sure that all of our policy language, and we educate our staff around that. We haven't been as, you know, diligent, because our policy manuals are quite large, but we have done a whole lot around gender identity. When the policies, the laws were changed, we created new policy, but we didn't update all of our other policies around that. So we are working with mask right now, and you'll be seeing more of these as they go. So it would be, I would defer to the committee to determine whether you want a second read or you feel comfortable in voting these now.
If I may say, a second read is usually not necessary for an edit, it's only if you introduce a new measure.
It's only if it's a major change. It doesn't need a second read, as far as I'm concerned, I think it's fine. I would make a motion to approve it.
Roll call?
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Okay. The next motion is to approve instructional materials policy. Any discussion on this for us? All right, I need a motion to approve by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Roll call?
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, next is budget transfer. Motion to approve the budget transfer in the amount of $610,000. I need a motion by Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Hoi. Roll call?
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, I need a motion to take and approve all five conferences together by Mr. Arti, seconded by Mr. Nutter. We might make it.
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, on sick leave, the member of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 26 leave days to Christian colonel Lowell High School teacher. Motion to approve UTL donated sick days.
Move.
By Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Nutter. Roll call?
Ms. Samaras?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
All right, next by the UTL, the members of the United Teachers of Lowell hereby donate 16 sick leave days to Maria Silva, Food Services Lowell High School. Need a motion to approve UTL donated sick days. By, Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Hoi. A motion to adjourn?
No, you need to, roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Ms. Samaras?
I'm a little late, I want to beat that 10 o'clock, come on out. Roll call. Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Arti?
Yes.
Mr. Hoi?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Nutter?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you, all right. Now we need a motion to adjourn by Mr. Nutter, seconded by Mr. Dakota. You know, the city council went over it about an hour ago. I'm not saying anything.